Dana.
I'm sorry, I don't, Chris.
Okay, we have to imagine it.
Yeah.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, real call of the board. Dave, are you present?
Present.
Dee?
Present.
Chris? Present. Okay. Let's see, we... First, well, we have an appointment with Tom Bay. Is Tom here? Okay, why don't we do this? Why don't we do department head reports first? Because our department heads are here. And Emmett, do you want to start us off?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Got no on the highway on January. It was kind of just hit and miss with a little bit of snow, not a whole lot. So there wasn't a whole lot going on, on the highway part of it. The fire part of it, we're doing our weekly trainings and in meetings. We did vote two new members on... Maybe three, three new members on last month. Which two of the females are in the EMT class. They've started. And then the gentleman started. He's going to be doing his certification at Fire Academy. So... That's in the works and just everyday business.
Okay.
Meeting with Phil and Steve there once a week, doing that still. And that seems to be working real good, talking things over with them gentlemen. The painting that took place in the building down the hall in the training room, it's like brand new again. They did a very nice job on that. Can't thank them enough. It just made the place homey again and...
Yeah, I really like the color.
Yeah, I don't know where it came from, but it's all good.
I want to ask a question about how your folks get their certification. So is that a process that... Is that a time-consuming process? And can a person who's volunteered for the fire department participate in any fire activities before they're certified? How does that work?
No, no, before they get, have anything to do with fire or any of that stuff, they have to have the classes and the certifications.
So does that take quite a while?
Yeah, how many hours is that firefighter one? Sendles here, she can help you with that. She does a lot of that stuff for me, but...
Hi, Sendle. I can't hear you.
There are several different levels for each certification. So there's Fire One, which is, I believe, 120 hours. There's Fire Two, which is 80 hours. And then there's several different courses for Firefighter Three. EMS is a whole other animal. That one takes a lot more time. And it also takes, every two years, there is a recertification cycle where we have to have so many hours of continuing education. And then we also have to go through a retest every two years for our... And that goes up at each level of certification. So there's EMT, Advanced EMT, and then Paramedic. And we have all three levels.
You have all three levels what?
On the department.
Oh, on the department, that's great. That's great. And so is there, is there a cost to getting certified? There must be. Okay, and then the...
Each class, it depends on the class, but you're looking at around, for affiliated, it's less money. So as long as you're on a department, that's why typically people go through us to get their certifications, otherwise it would cost them more. But for each certification, there's around a thousand dollars.
It's 1,500 for the EMT right now, $1,500. The EMT classes, Monday, Tuesday nights and Thursday nights, three, three and a half hours an evening. And then a lot of Saturdays, so it takes away from home life about three months.
Your connection seems to be cutting in and out for audio. So unfortunately, I didn't hear what she just said.
Yeah, everybody, everybody's audio is cutting in and out. It's not just ours. It's up to, the EMT class is like five months long.
Okay, substantial.
It's in Concord. They drive to Concord and some of it is online. But they have the classroom down there to Concord.
Off of Pembroke Road, you mean, where the fire station is? Not station, but where they have the... The classes aren't there?
No, the classes are at the Old Bear Wright Building, Granite State EMT. Actually, actually, the gentleman that teaches the EMT classes is a member of our department now. So...
That's good.
Yeah, it's real good. So... Yeah, no, the Fire Academy is down to Smokey Bear Boulevard off in 106. That's where you go for your fire, fire stuff. And right now...
No, okay, so you're talking about EMTs go to the bear place there, the one on... Yeah, so the firefighters who go to the fireplace, off Pembroke Road.
Fire Academy.
106 is what it is, yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
And the town pays for all that?
Not all the time. The last, the last few people that we've had come on have already been certified from other departments, which we've lucked out on.
But normally, we would pay if they were on, normally, we would, the webs would pay if they didn't have it and they're joining our fire department.
Right, right. The young man, the young man that is doing the firefighter one certification, he's a veteran, so they're, they're going to pay. They're, the veterans, whatever, however, all that works, it's taken care of that.
That's great.
I mean, it is, and...
And I have another question, Emmett, if you don't mind. When, when the town provides the money for the training, do we get any guarantee that the person will stay with us for a certain period of time? So at least we know that when we train them, that they won't just leave and go somewhere else?
A minimum of two years we require. And then if, then if they leave before that, if they leave before the two years, then we prorate it and get it figured out and go from there.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Just towards Dee's question, she was asking about costs for training. In the budget, we have training for WFD as 2,500 and also training for medical training at 2,000.
Oh, okay.
Standard line items in the budget.
Right, but the medical training, the medical training, that could be used for bringing somebody in from the outside to train the EMTs that are already there for their research. That doesn't actually mean that's going to be used to put somebody through a class.
Oh.
So that, that training and then even training up in the fire department one, that, that can be used for sending somebody to the academy. But if we bring somebody out, somebody into the building to give us a class on, on whatevers, that money, because you have to pay them folks, because it's easier to hire an instructor to come to the firehouse to give a class than it is to take, bus 22 people...
Right.
Yeah, that's true.
Off out of town, and then you left nobody in town if the fire bell rang. So that's not a lot of money in there for training, but it is what we have, so... And we also have a young man now that's taking a class at the academy so he can come back and teach, teach classes. Right, but... Because if you, if you have a light burn, even if it's a dollhouse, to use your airflow, which we build a little buildings to, to do the airflow in the back drafts and all that, it could be four by four, but you, you need a instructor there because there's live fire to, to do that training, so... There's a lot to...
Yeah. Emmett, there's one more question. Were you able to get hold of Erin?
I've got a call into her. I've left her a message there this morning. I haven't heard back from her today.
Okay.
I expect something, she usually gets right back.
Okay.
And while we're on the fire, the ordinance that you folks put together for the false alarm stuff that Dana gave me the other day, we read that over and looked at it and should be good to go. I'm good with it.
Steve, put that together.
The only thing I'd like, the only one thing I would like to ask, and I don't know if it can be possible, it's where we get out, do this. And I know that money usually probably goes back into the general fund, but I think some of that, is there any way that we can put that back into our budget? I know, I know some of that stuff I don't know about. And I might be speaking out of terms and I should have talked to Steve about this before I talk out loud. But I think some of the, it would almost be like sending your folks out to direct traffic in another town. I don't, I, does that go back into the town budget, Steve? Do you guys get that back into our budget now?
So that goes into a special fund. We had to do a warrant article on that, if I remember correctly. So if we work a detail, the money from the detail after the offices are paid and everything is paid out of it, goes into a revolving fund for police equipment. And it's got to be used only for that. But this way, we don't lose it from year to year, or we don't have to use it from year to year. Some of that money is already going to be spent for the equipment for this new car that we have now. I think that'd be a great idea, because you don't know how much you're ever going to get. You may get one call out, you may get 20 call outs for false fire alarms. But on the subject of the false fire alarms, I spoke to one of the girls down there. So if you get a false alarm down there and it's a thousand dollar bill, half of it comes from the company, the other half comes from the person who set the alarm off. So problem is, half of those people are from the state, but the state will still have to fork it up. I don't know if the company themselves will pay the full boat and then collect it from the state, more than likely, because they'll probably get interest and everything on top of it. But at least we get the money for it, well, the fire department gets the money for it, which either goes towards training or towards the town budget, either one.
I think it makes, I think it makes sense to go back to the fire department.
Absolutely, I agree.
Good, yeah.
I agree too.
I would say the best thing is look at the revolving fund that we have, the way you people set it up, and we can do the same thing for them.
Dana? Are you?
Yes, I know about revolving funds, and there is a procedure that you do need to do. And I will let you know what it is, and you can go forward.
Okay, good.
So one other question now. We'll keep track of all this stuff, but when it comes time to send them a bill, is that something that's going to come the lead ahead from Dana, from the town hall? Or how, I think that's the right thing to do, not to put another load on Dana, but I just think that would be...
I think it would be better, Emmett, if it did come from us.
Yeah, I do, I agree.
Yep. So, so how, how are we doing relative to all these false alarms? How, how many have you had? This year?
I don't, well, this year so far, January and February, I think we've been down there twice. I know once, I went down a week ago Friday, Phil and I went down. And that was caused, that was, that was caused by smoking materials.
Oh, really? So it wasn't actually a false alarm?
Yeah, yeah, no, they were doing things in the bedroom under the smoke detector that going to set it off. So then they cover it up with perfume and, and...
And it's all particulate, so it sets the alarm off.
Yeah, yeah. So... That, yeah. But that's one of the free ones, and then we'll go from there, I guess. I mean, if you go down there and they burnt toast or the oven smoking because they're cooking chicken, I mean, that's a different story. They need to fix that problem, but two or three times in the same day for the same thing, sometimes it's old. I'll work with Dana with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Dana, for the, for this ordinance and the revolving fund, do we need to wait for the revolving fund process before we do the ordinance part? Or do we, or can we move forward on that and continue with the fund?
For the ordinance, you would need to hold a public hearing. The select board can, can adopt it, but you would need to have at least one public hearing. For the revolving fund, I believe that's going to have to go to the town meeting. And I need to reread exactly the steps that you need to do. So in the meantime, if there were funds that accrued from this, it would go into the general fund.
So in the meantime then, since our intention is to get those funds back to the fire department, is there some way we can keep track of how much money goes into the general fund that would have gone to the fire department and then get that out and move it over to the fire department?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Okay. Okay, so Emmett, do you have, have you written? I know that there, there wasn't that much to do, I guess, in the last month. But can you give us a written report on that?
Sent it out a couple of days ago.
You did?
Sure did.
Yep.
I didn't get it.
It came, yeah, two days ago on the 6th.
No, I didn't get it.
2:22 PM.
Dana, why, why is this happening?
I don't know. Have we had mainstay work with you in your email lately?
No, no.
Because I've asked them to.
Oh, no, I haven't heard from them. But you know, who knows, they might be trying to email me and I'm just not getting the emails.
Well, I will contact them again.
Okay, thank you. This is frustrating.
You should be getting, I don't blame you for being frustrated, I would be.
It's very frustrating, very frustrating. So, Dave, could you forward me Emmett's report? That would be great. Thank you, Emmett.
I got, I got the fire report and the road agent report on mine, and my...
Do you have the others? Do you have the others, Chris?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay, I just sent you the fire one. I'm going to grab the others and send them as well.
Okay, so, so Emmett then, is there something that you want to tell us about road agenting? Or were you done with that?
Well, January, it was just kind, it wasn't a whole lot going on, so there wasn't a whole lot that I did on the road. Other than that, but we do, we do need to talk about summer projects because I need to know what's going on and what you guys have for a plan and...
Well, hopefully, hopefully, the big project is going to be the White Plains Road Bridge.
Well, that's fine, but I, I need to know, am I going to be a part of that? Or am I just going to drive by and wave to the guys that are working there? Or, I mean, that's what I need to...
I know, and we, we all need to hear from Erin, you know, exactly.
I have people now that are calling me for work that they want me to do this summer, but I, I don't want to overbook myself. I know we have some road projects that need to be done, but I, I don't want to turn these, these other jobs down. Figure you're going to have the town work. And then in April, May, like last year, I, the ball dropped and... So I, I need to, I lived on love last summer and I am not going to do it again this summer.
Right, so the other project, of course, is building that road up to the Salt Shed site?
Correct.
So, so we're hoping, depending upon how this spring, how wet or dry the spring is, that, that you can, you know, you, when you talk to the committee about that, you put it in, I think you did three different stages that you were planning on doing the road in. So, you know, we, we hope that we can get you to do that work.
So what, what do the other two, and how do they feel about me doing the work? Because I'd like to know, have a little good feeling that I had some stuff around town. And if I don't, I need to start do something different, so... Promises don't pay the bills, so I, I kind of need to know what, what's going on. I know, I know a lot of it has to do with Erin and engineering the hill. And I'll go along with working with the engineer, because I can do that. But are you going to have me do that job or you're going to put it out to bid? I guess that's what I need to know.
Well, no, I mean, I think that the committee, the subcommittee felt that they wanted you to do that work. Now, I haven't brought this to the board yet, because, you know, we, we haven't begun to talk about that, that kind of summer work. But Dee, Dee and Dave, just, you know, you know that the Salt Shed Subcommittee, last time we met, which was, seems like a long time ago now, we were talking to Emmett about building the road up to the level of the Salt Shed. Dee, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, I can hear my voice echo.
I have a wicked echo every time. I don't know, I have to ask somebody about how, how come I have an echo?
Maybe somebody has...
It's because somebody's mic and speaker are both open and the system isn't smart enough to separate them out.
Oh, is that it? Well, you're the IT guy, not me, baby. But I, well, I just kind of thought Emmett was going to do the job. I mean, that's what I thought he is. It's kind of our own road.
Yes.
And, and I would, I would agree with that. But I also know that, for example, with the parking lot at the public safety building, apparently, a lot of people thought that, and then it was sent out to bid. So I guess the question that he's asking, and my question as well, would be, what is our actual process and how do we make that decision and when?
Okay, so, you know, we should probably have a conversation about process. You know, we, we had, we have a policy in town that if the project is over $10,000, that it has to, we have to go out to bid. And with this project, with the early, the early stage of this road, I guess, Emmett, correct me if I say something wrong, it's going to come in under $10,000. And so we don't have to put it out to bid. And Emmett...
You're muted, Emmett.
And, you know, Emmett is, is capable of building a road. So, you know, this one, there's some, there's a steep part up at the top and that had committee members wanting to have engineering done on it. And Emmett's willing to work with the engineer. But, you know, he can, he could do the work for under, for close to $10,000?
If we do it in sections. I mean, you're not going to build that road up, you're not going to do it all for that, but I mean, if you did it in steps, I, I just, I just want to be clear because I don't want to tell anybody...
Is that going to be tar, are they going to tar that road up to there eventually or?
Eventually, it will be. It won't be, it won't be in the beginning until the project's close to being done.
May I speak?
Sure.
Okay. So when your road agent works for the town, you buy product from places that he set up. And municipalities get a break on that. If you put it out to bid, your contractor is going to make money on the product as well as the labor, as well as the equipment. When we work for the town, we work hourly. It's a totally different, I've tried to explain this to you guys a number of times, but it's a totally different way of, of estimating a job. You're estimating by the hours it's going to take you, the equipment you're going to use. So the town gets a better deal if you keep Emmett in town, in case there's a fire call. You keep him working so that he can keep his people working so that they will plow your roads in the winter. So there's benefits on all levels. But the bills are going to come in differently when you employ your road agent as opposed to when you had him do, for example, you put the, you had him do the cleanup of that house and he plunked everything in together. It's, it's different. And I know it's hard to understand, but we're doing it basically, you're doing, you're paying for the product that we put out and we're, we're just, we're billing you for our time. You understand? Instead of just a plunk, $54,000, and here it is, when it could be $38,000 when you get done. That's just hypothetically not to do with a safety shed. So it's a different way of bidding or not really, it's not even bidding. It's giving you an estimate of what a job will cost, you understand? Because you still have to pay for your gravel. You still have to pay for your engineer.
So my, my, my question, and I don't know whether this is best for Emmett and Sue or Chris or Dana to answer, but the, since we have a road agent whose job is to handle all of our roads in town, and obviously, like if we're repaving a road, that's way over 10 grand and that should not be going out to bid and, and isn't. Isn't this the same thing? Since it's handling a road that's being created in town?
Well, that's why we want him to do this work.
Okay.
But, yeah.
I agree.
So, so then, that's great, so... Are you guys going to vote on that tonight? That you're going to have me do that job? Or you, or I just, I just, in two months, I can't have a change that, well... And then, then in another, another thing we need to discuss is Concord Drive.
Yep.
Yeah, let's finish that safety building thing and...
Salt Shed, I think you mean.
Salt Shed, safety, yeah, up over the hill. Salt shed, safety, yeah, up over the hill.
So, um, I don't know that at this point we need to vote on it. We can commit to having you do the work, but since we don't know exactly how much those three phases are going to be, um, it would be a little bit weird, I think, to make a motion on it now. So if you want Emmett, um, we can hire, we can actually, I don't know if it would be appropriate seeing as how you're our road agent, but, you know, we could draw up some kind of a contract assuring you that you have the job. Um, but we need to see your estimate. But what do you need?
What's the best way to handle this, Dana? Obviously, we want him to do it and he wants some sort of assurance that he's actually doing it. So what's the best way to handle that?
Well, I, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Dana, go ahead.
Um, I think that, you know, Emmett is, if, if, if Emmett were a department of the town and worked for the town and you had him do projects for the town, I consider him a department of the town. Um, but, so I think that if, and I believe I'm hearing you say that, yes, you want him to do the salt shed road project. I, I don't think there's anything wrong with writing up a, a simple agreement so that he is assured that he will be doing that.
And can we do that, can we do that without a, a firm price at this point?
Well, that's up to the board. Um, but I think that, you know, it's gonna cost what it costs. Um, so if you don't have a price yet and you'd like to wait for one.
Well, I sort of feel like we have worked out, I mean, based on what you said before, Emmett, that we've worked out a way to do this that would wind up being $10,000 or so.
Per section, that's it.
No, no, no.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Cause you figure up the gravel, you figure up the gravel. Uh, yeah, no, you can't put a road up, you can't, you can't go up there and cut the brush, excavate that 16 or 18 inches of material that's on that road and, and put a three-inch base road up through there and ditch it the way you want the water to run. $10,000, it's gonna cost you half that or, or better than half that for the engineer.
Um, oh, no, the engineer is not part of it.
I know, but I'm just, I'm just talking. I realize that. You, you, I had it all figured out and then it all, so.
Yeah, that's what I'm, I'm working on. I remember you figuring it out. And so, you know, just go back to those figures and, and tell us what it, what it will cost. I mean, I seem to recall those three stages. Uh, you would do a stage and we, you know, it would be about $3,300 or so. And in the end, it would cost 10,000. But, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll have the committee, I don't, you know, I think what's best, actually, Emmett, is if we have another subcommittee meeting and we talk about what it will take for you to build that road up there so that we all understand, because maybe there's misunderstandings too among members of the committee as to where we are, what you're gonna need to get that road done. So why don't we do that? Why don't we just hold off for a week or so until we can get a subcommittee meeting together?
Might I suggest that, obviously, that's important for budgeting and how much it's going to cost. Uh, but unless you feel that that's going to change, that we should or shouldn't use Emmett, maybe we should just make a, maybe it's appropriate or not, but maybe we should make a motion to say that we will be using the road agent for all in-town road and parking projects. Because that's why we hired a road agent to take care of the roads and stuff.
The, the road agent takes care of all the roads and then other projects.
A road, right?
It's a road.
It's gonna be a town, it's gonna be a town road. It's gonna be a town road at the end of the day.
Well, it's gonna be an access point, right?
It'll be a drive. It will be town maintained.
You're gonna have, you're gonna have the road agent plow it, aren't you? Yeah.
Hope so.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So if, if you have a contract now with your road agent, okay? And the road agent in the contract, I believe it's the second paragraph, says that he's, he's been charged with the responsibility of all highways, roads and bridges.
And bridges.
Believe it or not. Um, so I think, I think we're making this a little too complicated and I'm, I'm begging for Dana to maybe step in because he knows more about this than obviously any of us do. Um, but if, if you trust Emmett to do the work, all we're asking for is not just one of you to say, oh, yes, we plan on you doing the work. It should be all three selectmen saying, yes, Emmett, you're gonna do the work. We're gonna do so much, we're gonna do it in stages and then we can plan from there. Um.
But I think that's what we're saying. Sissy, I think all of us have said that.
Well, I think, I think it should be documented. Because let me, let me just, let me just throw one up at you, okay, for a moment, Chris, okay? Dustin Road now has become an issue and you guys all agree that he was gonna get down there and start digging test pits. But I said, hang on, if we, and now we find out it's in the corridor of the Warner River. So that would be putting us in harm's way if we had actually gone down there and started digging because it's our insurance and it's our liability that would have had to take that. So what I'm asking for here is a little more reassurance from the board saying, we stand behind our road agent and these are the projects we want done and have it very clear and have it at least in the minutes. And that all of you concur and all of you agree. Because it seems sometimes, I'm sorry, but it's a lot of back and forth and uncertainty. And it's really not fair to us. We give a lot to this town, whether you like us or not, doesn't matter. We give a lot and do a lot and we just need some reassurance that we are actually gonna do the work and it's not gonna be pulled away from us halfway through. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Okay.
So Emmett, I have a, oh, sorry, go ahead. I just have one little question to ask. Emmett, when you dig up all that, you're gonna have to dig all that dirt out and then put a base for the road? Does that, do we sell that? Can we sell that land to, uh, to that dirt? To people who want like fill in this town and make some extra money for us?
I hope not because I want to build another driveway there at the safety building. So we have two entrances in and out and um.
So you use it somewhere else there?
Yeah, yeah. And, and then, and then what I do, what I do Dee is down to the old town pit where the dump used to be.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Um, anything that can be, um, crushed, if it's, if it's rocks and, um, dirt and debris, I haul it all back there. And then when I get 3,000 yards, I have Henneka Crush Stone come over from Henneka at $5.25 a yard and they crush it all up. And then we have recycled material that I use back out on our dirt roads. I've done that, I've done that since I've been the road agent and I usually, it usually takes me like three years to get 3,000 yards, all my old tire that we rip off.
Yeah, yeah.
The roads and stuff gets all recycled in that and um.
Well, that's good to know.
And reused, yeah.
You gotta write me some stories through my paper so we can put it so everybody knows what you're doing out there.
Yeah, no, that's what, that's what happens with all the, anything that we can reuse.
Oh, okay, that's good. Okay, that's good. Thank you.
So, so Dana, make sure that the minutes show that the board is in agreement that the road going up to the salt shed site will be built by Emmett. Makes sense. So.
Okay.
We're on the record on that, Emmett.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, um, Concord Drive. Um, that's looking like maybe it will be a project, but we need to be kind of in touch or with somebody from that end of town because if they start that project in September, the end of October, it's gonna, we, we've gotta be in sync down there. So we're not trying to tar that road to finish it in November and December in, in trying to tar it before the snow falls next winter. So um.
Yeah, that will, I think we need to make sure that we communicate with them and work on timelines because it obviously can't be too late, but it also can't be too early because the funding for that would be part of the, uh, is the CR, e- either the ETF or CRF, I don't remember which one it is. Uh, but it'll be part of one of those funds and that doesn't come until the town votes on it, on the warrant article. Uh, so you don't actually have the funding for that until after town meeting.
Correct, but when, I mean.
But we, we definitely need the communication so that we know.
My way of, my way of thinking when we're building a road in town is you start it the day school gets out. So you're not dealing with the buses all summer and you have it all back ready for the buses when they start back in in the fall. And, um, because getting in and out of Pillsbury Lake, out behind the lake, there's only one way in and one way out. And I mean, it's gonna be, it, it's gonna be hard going at times because it's narrow.
Emmett, who would be the person over there to, to, to get, is, would it be one of the commissioners over there?
Who would know? I don't, yeah, I don't know them. I, I don't know, I don't, I don't know.
It should be, probably the best way to go about it is to have Dana contact the Chair of the PLVD Commission to ask who the contractor is that will be handling that, uh, pipe. Uh, I, I wanna say repair, but it's not replacement and then get them in touch with them.
So you said the Pillsbury Lake Village District? Those people?
Yes.
Okay.
They're the ones in charge of the water.
Oh, yeah, it's the water district.
Yes, PLVD is the water district. They're the same thing.
So am I thinking correctly? They're replacing the water lines on Concord Drive?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, so, yeah, I will contact them.
Okay, that, that would be very helpful.
Yes.
Okay.
Now, now, last year's project was Deer Meadow Road. Um, where are we at with that? From the clubhouse down to Cedar Mill Group. Um, the money's in the bank.
Yeah, that should already be sitting in the, either CRF or ETF. Sorry, I just consider them the same thing as a fund, but I know there's a technical difference, but.
So if the money's in the bank, why wouldn't you be able to move ahead on that when you can?
Well, that's what, that's, that's what I'm talking about. That's what I'm, that's what I'm here tonight asking. So we're all on the same page in, in, in everything up to par and then I'm not wondering and, um, I can make a plan.
Sure. Um, I, Dee and Dave, are you in concurrence that Emmett should go ahead with that Deer Meadow Road project?
Yeah, I would, I would think so. Where's it gonna be from? Where's Deer Meadow Road gonna start? It goes to Cedar Mill. Where's it gonna begin?
At the clubhouse.
Oh, okay, at the clubhouse.
Coming out, coming, coming out of Concord Drive, right on that shop corner there where the guardrails were all bent over and stuff.
Yeah, but they get hit all the time, yeah.
Yeah.
There's a, I know that we, we did part of Deer Meadow and, and ended up stopping and then how, how far back was that compared to where you're gonna be starting? Is it the same place or there's a?
No, no.
Right?
No, it's a chunk between. It's the, it's, um, the ledge is coming up out of the ground there and the water doesn't, when it comes out of Concord Drive, it just in, yeah.
It sounds like it'll be perfect time to do it at the same time as Conkers because then it can all be.
paved all at the same time.
Together correctly.
That makes sense. That makes perfect sense. Sure, go ahead. I mean, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, no, that's a good plan.
Yep, especially with the money already there and kind of earmarked for it. That makes perfect sense.
Okay. Look at all we got done tonight. In a matter of minutes, look at all we got done tonight.
Are you good, Emmett?
Thank you.
Trying to creep you on the streets instead of off the streets, Emmett.
Okay.
All right, well, good. Thank you, Emmett. Um, Steve, what have you, what do you have for us?
So, did you get my report?
Yes. I got your report.
Well, there's a, there's an error right off the start. Um, I didn't turn, I didn't have $36,614 at the end of the year. I only had $34,340.97. So.
But it's the end of 2010.
And I off by a couple of grand. Oh, yeah, how did we get that? Okay, I'm, see, I need somebody to proofread it for me. So that should be 2020. So there's two mistakes in that one aisle.
So what was the, what was the money, did you say? Okay. I just wondered what year. I said, when am I reading this right? Just wanna get younger. Thank you.
That makes us all younger. I swear to God, really. Um, so we picked up our new cruiser. Um, it's exactly like the one we just got, so that makes it real nice. Uh, and I, like I said, Primex is willing to pay 90% of the cost of all the new equipment installed. Um, so we have, we have about $780, I think, is what's gonna be our portion. Um, for about $8,000 worth of equipment.
That's great.
Um, I'm happy for Primex to do that. Plus, we have a $1,000 deductible on our insurance that Primex is gonna collect and we should be getting that from the other insurance company. Um, January 1st to February 1st, we had 107 motor vehicle stops, seven summonses, totaling the state not $861.80. We had, uh, seven arrests, 24 charges out of the seven arrests. Uh, DWI operating after suspension, I mean, the list goes on and on, disobeying, reckless, uh, false reports, uh, misuse of plates, eluding an officer, unregistered motor vehicles, warrants. Uh, it just, this is like an never-ending list of people. Every, every month, we have the same charges on a number of different people.
Are these, are these town residents?
Some are, some are. Luckily, most of these were not.
Are you generally seeing the same or similar, uh, sorry, the same people? Or is it generally a spread?
These were, one was a repeat offender for us out of town and the rest were out of town, which was, I'm glad of that. Um, but in the local community, they're all within surrounding towns of us. Concord, Bosquin, Warner, Salisbury, so that's not too, too far away. They're, they're traveling through our town on a daily or bi-weekly basis. Um, we had 26 other calls for service, uh, assist to the fire departments, domestic violence services, sex offender registrations, house checks, lost properties, that's just to name a few of them. Um, we have no training scheduled for the month of, uh, January or February, which is so far, so good. The next one isn't till March. Uh, we have a total of two active COVID-19 cases in town, so that's way down. We had 14 last month.
Wow. I didn't, I didn't have any idea about that.
Um, some of the cases did not get reported to us until after the 10 days or the 20 days was up. So, uh, there was a few that we didn't know about that never got reported.
I, I think it had, this morning on the news, it had 53 cases in Webster. You know, not, they're not all active, but so far.
We've only got two active cases. What they, it's kinda odd because I've noticed that they send us, some of these people were deemed active back in December. that they send us, some of these people were deemed active back in December. Well, they're not active now, but they're still on the list. So we're trying to get them to update it to give us a twenty-day maximum after the twenty days unless they're hospitalized, you know, because of this. So we have some kind of an idea of how many active cases we have in town. As of right now, we have two, which is pretty low and I'm, I'm glad of that. And that's pretty much what I have for the, for the month of January.
Steve, we don't get to keep the eight sixty-one eighty that you got in fines, do we?
Yeah, no, I wish we did.
I asked that at the time. I'm just hoping you get a different answer.
Yeah, that goes. It's funny because all the summonses that we write, the state gets every single dime, which goes to pay for the courts and some goes into highway funds. But I, I think some of it actually ends up in a block grant eventually, but most of it goes to pay courts.
Did at one time, a portion of it went back to the towns?
Actually, a portion of it goes to the police academy for the, pay for the training. Because we send an officer to the academy, we don't pay for any of his training, even though he's there for sixteen weeks.
Yeah.
But no, reluctantly, we don't get it. And if you look, if you look at the history, some of the towns down in the southern states, the Carolinas and so, they make a full budget funding on writing summonses because every month, every penny they get from summonses goes back into their budget. So.
Yeah.
You drive through their town and you're going one mile an hour over, you get whacked with a fine to help fund their budgets. So it's, it's really not a good thing to do it that way.
Yeah.
Some of the stuff goes back into our budget though. For example, the overweight over by way Plains Bridge. Are there other examples that do? And how has the bridge been doing as far as people going across it?
We haven't had, we haven't caught any since, since January, we haven't caught any. We've only got, I think we caught three last, the last couple of months of last year. But all that funds comes back to us. There's very few that comes back to us. It's got to be a town ordinance. Technically, we could do a town ordinance for speeding and you could collect the money for speeding tickets. We'll see how far that goes. But that's, that's the only way we can get money back is it's got to be on a town ordinance.
Yeah.
Things such as the winter parking lanes?
That comes back to us. Winter parking fines, we do it on a town summons and they send the money right to us. If they don't respond within two weeks, then we have to issue them a summons so they go to court. But we try to get them to pay a parking ticket ahead of time. That's the same with dog fines. If the dog fines, if we collect it for a dog fine, that stays in the town. If they don't pay it, then we have to issue them a summons and it goes to court and the court collects the money.
What does a dog have to do to get fined?
Unlicensed. Dog fines.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's not the dog technically, it's the owner. But I'm sure the dog ends up paying for it one way or another.
Okay. Any other questions for Steve? Okay. Thanks, Steve.
You're welcome.
Keep up the good work. I'm glad the meetings between you and the fire department are going well.
I tell you, it's been really good. I mean, way better than I expected it to. With past experience, you know, I had all kinds of headaches that they said I'd have with poor Emmett and I think that's a myth because I've had nothing but great luck with him and I think he's done a fantastic job for the town.
Good. I agree. So, good. Okay. What else we have here? Oh, code enforcement. So Dana, was Tom Bay gonna actually be here tonight?
We did expect Tom to come.
Yep, and I sent him a message. He hasn't responded.
Okay.
So I wonder if he's not around. As long as we have Emmett sitting up there, it looks like we, we are going to talk about emergency lanes. I think there was an interest in actually determining where the emergency lanes were in town. Do you know off the top of your head, Emmett?
Yes, I do. Old Route 127, going down into Karen and Jack King's property. We have a pump site down there and we keep that cleaned up and plowed and smoothed up in the summer to get in and out of there with our fire trucks.
Okay.
We do a lot, we do a lot of training down there. Let's see, the backside of Pond Hill on the White Plains roadside, we put that into an emergency lane down over the hill from Jerry Buckley's on the class six part because all that water was coming down over there and all the silk was going into the lake and now that culvert that needs to be replaced is all full of silk. And we hired, we hired Aaron, the engineer, and went out there and she did quite a study and I got permission from the Austins up above to turn the water and we put the ditches back into place and got the water to where it was supposed to go. So now it doesn't go into the lake and fill it in the boat launch. And so the emergency lane gives us the, the right to go up there and keep the ditches cleaned out and the water going the way it should go.
So now is the emergency lane, the area from the bottom of Pond Hill by the lake all the way up to the Buckleys? Is that whole thing the emergency lane?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because them water turnouts start right on the flat, right after Jerry's, it comes down and it starts down over the hill. And then that's where them water turn out.
Chris?
Yeah.
If I might, the problem was when the water came down the road, it basically made the nitrates come down the road right into the, when a pocket and that was promoting the algae bloom.
Yeah.
In the lake. The lake was changing. When I was a kid, there was a couple of years there. I said to Emmett, there's a problem here. And I think it was before you came and that's when we finally addressed it with Aaron.
Yeah, okay.
So, so now with the road, keeping the road up to shape, you can keep a crown to the road so the water goes in the ditches and right and gets all, it doesn't just, if you don't maintain the hill and you get a riverbed and the water doesn't follow the ditches, it just goes right down. Well, the, eventually the road will turn into a riverbed and then you, you have to start over.
So, and then Clough-Sandbourne, the back, back of Clough-Sandbourne there, that's an emergency lane?
Yeah, same. We, we have the same going ons there over the years. Back when we had, when, when we had all that rain, we had all that rain. Bob Mark, even before Bob Mark, I mean, them wrote, them turnouts have been there for over a hundred years. We had the lawyer, Bot Mayor up there, Tom Mullins. We had quite a cadu up there back fourteen, fifteen years ago because the landowner filled them all in, hired somebody to come fill them all in. Right. Somebody was dumping on the property so they couldn't back in. He, he filled them all in. So the water went right down there, washed out the road at, at the intersection by Georgie Neville's. And then what happens is that's all wetlands down on the other side going into Trumble Pond and all the bogs and stuff and that, it just spills in with all that dirt. So the board back then put that into an emergency lane. The landowner had to go back and dig all the, the waterways back out and put it back the way it was for the last hundred years. And we've been maintaining the ditches since.
Are there any other emergency lanes in town?
Well, at one time I thought they were working on Chadwick Hill and I thought that went through, but now talking with Russ and I told Russ that I wasn't sure if it was followed through. I knew it was talked to. I told him to get ahold of Roy Fanjoy, which he did. And Roy said he knew there was talk about it when I talked to Roy on the follow-up because the beavers were, had the road flooded there and some landowners wanted to get out through there and then they, somebody wanted to put a gate up. But I guess from talking to Russ and with Roy, that was never considered, it never got into the emergency lane status. So they're the only three that I know of at this time.
Okay, that's great. Dana, was there something else we wanted to ask about that?
On the emergency lanes? No, Russ did some work on that and, and I think he did a nice job and we, we now know where they are.
Okay, great. Thank you.
The, the emergency lane on Clough, on the backside of Clough and Sandbin, we did work on that last fall because that was in Dianee. The water was coming down the, the wheel rot. And this summer, we're probably gonna have to do some work over on the backside of Pond Hill. But like we discussed, you asked before I did work on them emergency lanes to chat with the board first and I'll do that.
Okay, perfect.
Emmett, do you see a reason to consider going forward with Chadwick Hill Road?
It would be good for a fire lane to keep that opened up somewhat, but we were out there, we were out there. What was it? Maybe Steve could help me with this, but was it one or two summers in a row, the police cruiser was out there two or three, four times during the weekend and then we would have to go out with a forestry truck. And I know we've walked in a couple of times because of.
Beaver pond.
The, the beaver pond there and to put out a campfire where they would come in across, there's a bridge that comes in on the other side from Chadwick Hill on the Bosquin side. And yeah, no, I would be, I would be in favor of it, but I, I, you know, it all depends on how they feel.
Why would people go in there?
To party.
Oh. Is that why the police were going in there or was to?
We have to constantly check on it because they do. They have campfires down there. The four-wheelers go down inside. A gate would be good. A gate would really be good.
Yeah, but I don't think you can gate that. I don't think you can gate it by law. That's what some folks wanted to do was to gate it. But I, the gate, I don't believe you can gate it unless you.
Can't put a lock on it, can you?
No, because I think Roy, I think Roy, because it's a class six road, because Roy said the other day, he was blowing his snow in his driveway. So he parked the two vehicles over in there and then he heard somebody beeping the horn and there was a Jeep that came all the way through from the Bosquin side. So.
Well, we could put a gate there and just don't put a lock on it, like a farmer's gate. Whether that will stop them, I don't know.
No, because I, they're just gonna hook onto it with the, with their winch on the front of their buggy and there goes your gate. A couple of hundred bucks and I don't, I don't know. I don't want to work against you, but I don't think the gate's gonna mount it.
Not a problem.
When those four-wheelers go in there, do they, do they wheel all around in the woods?
They come in, they, there's a, they come in the town pit there and there's a snowmobile trail that, a major snowmobile trail that goes through them power lines. And yeah, that's a major route, four-wheeling route for Jeeps and them four-wheelers and all that stuff through the summer. That's why I had a big concern with leaving my machinery at the town pit where you folks were looking to build the sand shed because you go down there and the windows will be broke right out of it. The tires will be flat. I mean, that's happened many a times. I don't know how many thousands of dollars of glass I put, paid Granite State, put new windows. It's been broke down there in the last fifteen years. It's unreal.
It's terrible.
It's just terrible. You're a hundred percent right. It's terrible. Eight hundred dollars just for that front, that front glass and that loader.
So going back to the, the topic at hand would be emergency lanes for Chadwick Hill Road. Since it sounds like Russ, you did the research and contacting Roy and stuff as well. Do you want to speak to this at all? And tell us what you found out and what people were recommending or not?
That's basically all I found out. And they are correct with the road book that they could put the gate on it, but like they said, they can't lock it. That's about all I know of the situation.
So if it's a class six road, that road goes from Webster to Bosquin. I don't know where it actually turns into Bosquin.
Up on the hill, right just before, right at the bridge where the water comes out of Walker Pond. There's a channel out there and then the water comes out and then there's a bridge. They built, they built, when they logged out there, they built a logging bridge to hold logging trucks to come down out of there.
Oh.
Because at one time they, there was no bridge there for a while.
So, so is there an RSA that actually prohibits a town from putting a gate on its own class six road?
So there's nothing that prohibits us from putting a gate, but we're not allowed to lock it.
But why?
That's just the way it is in the RSA.
Because any, any landowner, any landowner out through there has the right to travel that road. And actually, any, anybody, I, yeah, anybody.
It's still, it's still a public road.
It's still a public road. Okay.
It's not maintained.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I think that, it seems to me, I remember a few years ago, they had a fire out there. So they were using that road to get to, the fire, I think was in Bosquin, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
So they were using that road to go out to Bosquin. A lot of woods out there.
That we went out, we had the boat, we had to take the boat from the boat launch. There was a bunch of fires on the Bosquin side one summer on and off. And then we'd always have to take the boat. We'd take the Webster boat and go over to Bosquin at their training where their pump site is off in Chadwick Hill. Go in there and then go out on to the island and take the floater pumps out there. And then we'd come up the other way on the Chadwick Hill Road to get on the other side of it. So it, it has worked in the past.
Okay. All right. Well, let's.
Would yours, and I'll ask both chiefs then, would you recommend that this become an emergency lane? Or do you just think that it's possible that it could be one, but you don't necessarily recommend that it become one now?
Well, if, if you did it, if you did it and then the beavers got down there and we had to go get the beavers out of the way, or we needed to replace a pipe, or we needed to cut a tree that was in the road, we'd be able to do it if it's an emergency lane. But if it's not considered an emergency lane, we can't do any, spend any budget money on that road or it will turn back into a class five road that we don't want.
No.
Am I saying that right, Dana?
Yes, yeah.
And so if it was an emergency lane to keep open for fires and being able to get the, what, what's that police cruiser, fifty thousand dollars, get out there without getting it all scratched up. But you don't want to make it good enough so people are driving in and out of there with Cadillacs.
That's it.
Too, but.
I think it would be a. I think it would be a very expensive project to make that road passable.
We don't, you don't wanna make it. You don't, you don't. An emergency lane isn't making it passable. It's just so you can get out through there with an all-wheel drive vehicle and you might be able to fill it, have to fill a rut in. I don't mean turn it into an emergency lane and then go out and gravel it. That's not where.
Oh, not like Clof Sandborn, not like that.
No, because the reason we do that out here is to get the crown of the road so we don't end up with a riverbed. But that's, that's a whole different porky pine on that end of town.
Steve?
I, I think Emmett has got a good idea on that. We should make it passable. I just wouldn't spend a lot of money, but you're still gonna have to fill in ruts. You know the beavers are gonna get into there. They've done it countless number of times. And if it goes unchecked, it's gonna wash that road right out so that nobody will get in. And we've used it in the past.
I think that if the ruts are filled in, you know, I wonder what the impact of the Jeeps and the ATVs are gonna be. Skidding and, you know, running their tires and so on to get up portions of it.
Sounds like they already do that, so.
Well, they do, they're gonna continue to do it.
Even if we don't fix, even if we don't fix our side, they're still gonna come in from Boskwin side and then have their parties and leave their dump and leave their campfires burning. And then go that way and then you gotta go all the way back out around. No, it's, it's whatever you folks, I mean, you guys are the, so.
Well, I think, I think we should consider this. I don't wanna make a decision tonight. If, Dave, have you been out there?
I, I've been out near it. I haven't been all the way down there.
I would encourage you to do that. You can go in the Boskwin side. Do you know where that is?
Yeah, like I said, I haven't gone the whole way.
Yeah, it's a beautiful road, but it's really, really rough.
Does that go out by Bastuzzi? Doesn't that end up Bastuzzi's farm there?
No, no, I, that, it could, I think, if you go off to the left. But if you go to the right, it goes right around the backside of the pond and comes back out to Chadwick Hill.
Oh, okay. Oh, all right. Okay.
I think, I think if you go to the left, out in there where Dick Fisher used to have his house. And off to the left out through there, that goes out. Yeah, that will end right up in the back of them big fields up across from Stanley Silver's where Mark and Mason have their house up on.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Okay, well, let's, let's move on from this. I don't wanna lose the thread of this, Dana. I think that we should revisit this in a while.
Okay, all right.
Have a chance to get out there and look at it.
Would this be public hearing or just a vote?
To do whatever.
To, to make an emergency lane?
Yeah.
You know, I don't believe you'd need a public hearing on that, but I would.
Do.
Before I told you, yeah. Do you, Russ?
Yeah, the last three, the other three were done with the public hearing.
Okay, then, then I stand corrected.
Okay, so the false alarm ordinance, we've already, we've talked about that?
Yeah.
You want me to set up a public hearing on that? You're going to go forward?
Yes.
And then we'll research about a fire department revolving fund.
Okay.
Would it make sense to schedule all three of these public hearings at once?
Oh, yeah.
Good idea.
I love that idea. That's efficiency. It's beautiful.
That's not usually our MO, but. I'm sorry, I'm just kidding. Just kidding.
Okay, so you're gonna, you're gonna arrange that. The investment policy, what would you like to talk about there?
I believe that you've heard from Bruce on the investment policy. And he's not asking for anything to change in, in what it is. And it is pretty strict about what the treasurer can, where the treasurer can park the town's money. And, and I think that there's really no reason not to just reaffirm this policy. It is a town policy, but I think Bruce is looking to have it reaffirmed because the auditors do ask for it every year.
Yes.
And so I think that if we can say the board has looked at this and has reaffirmed it, is what we're looking for.
Well, I would, I would certainly reaffirm it. There's, you know, it's been working fine. No reason to change it.
Yeah, I believe that the last time we looked at it, you had some questions about where the investments were. And Bruce kind of answered that, saying that we are giving basically the best that we can with what we're allowed to do legally. And so the, yeah, I would make a motion that we reaffirm this.
Second. Good. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, and then town report update.
I was working on the town report today. And some of you heard from me asking about reports and I appreciate you getting back to me. Thank you. I am hoping to have everything for the town report by the 19th. And I did contact everyone I didn't have a report from today and have had some good success in getting things in. I did send out pictures and, and I did get, I got the picture of the turtle. And so those are the types of things, I guess, I'm looking for, if the board would like a little input on, on the pictures. We have the dedication picture, which is no issue. The picture for the cover of the town report and other pictures that might be within. We've had people that have submitted some very nice pictures, a lot of wildlife pictures, which is nice.
You know, I would suggest that all of the pictures that are submitted get used in the town report. And that the best one should go on the cover with a little, maybe a little story. Do we know who the people are that have submitted all of these?
And how many pictures were there again, total?
What'd you say, Dave?
I asked how many pictures.
Oh, oh, oh.
I think I probably have between 20 and 30 pictures.
Oh, my God, I've seen.
Well, those are the ones, the ones I didn't like, I didn't send you, so. But anyway, and I, and I like the idea of using everyone's pictures. But sometimes then it's not, it's hard to find spaces to place them.
Yeah, I, if it were, say, three to five, I think that would make sense. But when we've got 20 to 30, that's not really gonna fit in there very well.
I had no idea about that.
I didn't either, that's why I asked.
Yeah, yeah.
So we've got, so I.
You made me come clean, yeah.
We use the top five. So, so we probably. Go ahead.
I should really send them out to you so that you could pick the ones that you think are appropriate.
I've got 300 and, I've got 300 and something pictures of things that have happened in town. But nobody over the last year on roads and fires and houses and projects and all that. But I didn't know you were looking for pictures, so.
That would be great, Emmett. Yeah. Yeah.
I don't think we wanna headline our town report with a car crash, so.
Yeah.
Not the cruiser, please. Not the cruiser.
But I have a question.
I think that would be great for the police report, right on the cover.
Right on the cover.
I have a question. And Emmett has so many pictures. We were talking to somebody about Clofpin Bridge, the engineer, no, a girl from the executive council.
No, no, she is, she is an executive counselor, Cindy.
Right. And so she wanted pictures of people, did we have any pictures of people fishing on the Clofpin Bridge? And that would help her bring.
I have an update. I have an update.
Okay, sorry.
No, that's okay. That's okay. So if you would, if you would send that, maybe the top five contenders out.
Okay.
And we can vote on them. And the draft report that I sent to everybody, it, you know, please insert anything that I have forgotten. It would be great if we could get that part done by Wednesday, if that's possible. If you could just read through the town report. And it's a word document, so you can go in there and edit it.
The select board draft version.
Yeah, the select board draft version. And then anything that you do add, if you could just put it in a color so that I can see what, what's being added, that would be helpful. But I went down the list that we made the other day. And I, you know, have, I covered everything from my, from my point of view. But they're, they're untrue. There's other stuff that I didn't think about, so. I got, I was worried that I wasn't gonna have enough to fill a page. And once I started writing, you know, I did blah, 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 you know? Cause we have been busy, even though it's been pandemic here. We have been working a lot, so.
Yeah, we've been very busy.
Yeah. Okay, Dana, is there anything else on the town report? I, I need to get you, let's see. I got you the, the select board report. There's something else I need to do though.
You were gonna write the dedication.
Oh, yeah, a dedication.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Is there any new business? So I have a new business. And, and so it's, it's about the Clofpin Bridge. So Cindy, I had contacted our executive counselor, who's Cindy Wilmington. And she came out, Dee was with us for, for that time as well, to hear what she had to say. And so she, she looked at the bridge, the, the fire truck went flying through. Another, a car before the, the fire truck, the car went flying through. She got an idea of how fast people go on that bridge, not the fire truck, but people. She sees how narrow it is. Dee talked to her about the people that fish and, you know, the moms and dads strolling their kids and all that kind of stuff. And the purpose of the meeting was to see if she could go to bat for us. To try Cindy Wilmington.
When?
Was when the fire, yeah.
It was the day of the fire. So it wasn't, it was, it wasn't this past Friday, it was the Friday before. And so, so anyway, she called me this morning and she told me that she had talked to Victoria, I can't remember her last name. She's the person in charge of Department of Transportation for the state. And she, she, she told her what the situation was out here, that we, we had wanted a, a bridge that was 28 feet wide. But the state didn't wanna pay for a 28-foot wide bridge. They wanted it to be 24-foot wide. And we wanted to submit a request for a 26-foot wide bridge as a meeting fee. And, and she said, what do you think of that? And she said, there is so much competition right now for those state bridge aid bridges. And there's hardly enough money to get to, you know, a third of the, of the towns that need to have bridges replaced. And she did not think that the state was gonna pay any more money than it actually has to, to get an adequate bridge across that river. So she said that she's not certain that if we wanted to go to the trouble of collecting pictures and really making a plea and really showing that the, the people of town use that bridge for fishing and walking and strolling and cycling and, and all of the things that we know occur on that bridge. If, unless we wanted to do that, she doesn't think, and she's, she, she wasn't even saying that even if we do that, that that would change the state's general plan for how it was gonna allocate money. So.
Well, we need somebody with a lot of money who wants to put a bridge in, not the state, so we can name it after them.
That's great.
But that doesn't make me happy.
Maybe the Abbey Rockefeller Memorial Bridge.
There you go.
So anyway, you know, that's, that's, that's where we're at right now. And we're only talking about a two-foot difference, basically, right?
But if we, oh, I'm sorry, if we wanted to do it to 28 feet, it would cost us $60,000 more, the town, right? Yeah, I thought that's.
That was the last estimate. I don't know how firm that would be, but.
That was also the estimate for the extra four feet.
That's right, yeah. The letter that you had planned to send, which we haven't, the 26-foot bridge. But I believe that's what you talked to the commissioner about, Chris. Yeah, yeah.
So, I don't know, my, my, I, I don't feel really optimistic about our chances, you know, of get, of getting a wider bridge. I just don't, I don't know how Emmett would feel about this. Probably my, my instincts are telling me that he wouldn't feel very good about the idea of putting something like, I don't know. You would probably hate the idea of a speed bump on either side of that bridge to slow people down. But other than that, I can't think of a way to slow people down. And that's really the issue. As soon as that bridge is broadened, people are bound to go faster, once they get used to passing each other on that bridge.
So I will say that, yeah, I, I would be against something like a speed bump because it's probably going to cause a lot more problems than it's going to fix. But at the same time, VHB did say that they had many other possibilities and ways to consider traffic calming. And of course, we also do have a police department. We can sit them there and let them write tickets for a few.
Absolutely.
Days or weeks or however long it takes.
Okay. That's, sounds like a nice place to hang out.
I think I see Emmett trying to talk, but he's muted.
Yeah, no, but the speed limit's 35. It's an unposted road, so any unposted road's 35 miles an hour. And even now, there's no, I mean, there's narrow bridge, one-lane bridge. But there's no sign back there saying 15 miles an hour. So it's pretty hard for Steve and his people to give tickets when there's nothing to go by. And 35 miles an hour is fast for that bridge. But can't give them a ticket if they're going 30 miles an hour across it. Right, Steve?
Absolutely. And that, I'd like, not many people can make that curve at the other end without going on the other side of the road at 30 miles an hour.
Oh, in a nice storm, I've done it backwards and made it. But so, so what we, where we need to start with that is, talk with Steve and myself, we'll get together and maybe.
Post it.
Post it, but you selectmen, I just can't go put a sign up and make it legal. I, I can't. Post it, but you selectmen, I just can't go put a sign up and make it legal, I, I can't, I have to.
I think we're talking about the, the new bridge and the
Yeah, but we could start now, we could start now.
Get them used to the speed, if we drop the speed down to thirty miles an hour even, all the way on that road. Let's get it down so they'll get used to it.
Well, but it, it would need to be much slower than thirty going across the bridge, though.
Well, I'd get the road at thirty right now, because that's going to drop at five miles an hour less than what it is. Get them used to slowing down now and, because when that bridge is there, it's going to be a lot straighter route and a lot wider route, smooth. You know it's going to pick up the speed.
Yeah.
So I, I would like to, as much as I like to just try to get things done quickly. And I would be in favor of trying to do something like a fifteen or twenty mile an hour sign for the bridge crossing itself. I think we should probably look at speed limits in various places in town and see whether they are or are not appropriate. I know there's been a lot of complaints of speeds and some of which are probably considered legal. But some that aren't around Pillsbury Lake and going down Deer Meadow and, and that as well. So we should probably look at several of these different roads together. And then try to figure out what is appropriate. And whether or not a public hearing is required, we should then probably have one to sit, to get input about what we think the speed should be on all the roads and then make it happen.
Well, the speed is, the speed is thirty five on roads other than the ones that are posted, like Battle Street. Part of that is posted forty, I think. But all the other roads in town. Is this right? Are thirty?
No, they're thirty five unless they're posted. A road that isn't posted, like, there's a lot of roads, the White Plains Road, I think on the state portion has a speed limit. I don't think we, I know there's a speed limit sign when you come from at eight Deer Meadow Road at the town line, right up the street before the next house, I think there's a thirty five mile an hour sign there. But it's so old and moldy, I don't know if you can even, whatever.
Hard to read it.
Um, there's not many, I know the Dustin Road doesn't have any speed limits, I, yeah, there isn't a lot of
Not a lot of signage.
Signage.
Maybe Steve, would this be something that you could think about? Is that, you know, it seems to me that Steve, you probably have a pretty good idea of the, whether the posting on roads either number one exists or number two is adequate.
Let me, over the next couple of days, go through all the streets and see what's posted, what isn't, and where we might put signage up.
I don't think you'll have to waste much gas.
No. We're on the road, I'm on that road anyway every day, so that'll be a good thing.
That would be great, Steve, thanks.
I can do that, I'll have that for you.
Dave, does that sound okay?
That sounds good to me.
Okay. Thank you.
I just had a a thought with the firehouse stuff, when you guys are ready. I'm sorry I butted in.
Well, yeah, let's finish this. Were we, we were on town report update, have we done with, are we done with town report update?
Yeah, because you're on new business, you were doing new business with Closepin Bridge Road.
Oh, yeah, that's right, so we're completely done with that.
Right, correspondence.
So, yeah, I'm, so in terms of, in terms of the bridge and in terms of where we're at with regard to the state, you know, that's it, so. Really, both you, both Dee and Dave, you were, you were both the proponents for going for or the twenty six. I just, I feel shy now to do it because I don't want to do anything to harm our, you know, I don't want us to get knocked back another year because now the state has to reconsider what they want to do about us and all of that. I don't know.
I would be really surprised if we don't get knocked back anyway. If there's all these people, I hate to say it, it's size matters, it's all these towns have road, uh, bridges. It's the big guys that are gonna get, I know how long it took them to redo one twenty seven. I think we are knocked back a couple, about twenty years, I think.
Well, you know, I think that we were going to be deep, but then Leslie and maybe you were with her, Emmett. I don't know, was Leslie and
Several folks from town went and participated in the meeting.
Yes, and, you know, they, they really promoted this idea, I mean, the bridge is triple red lined and you
I know.
Look through and see the river going by, you know.
And I was out patching some of it today.
So I, I think, you know, they got us moved up. And Cindy said that she would go to bat to us, with us, she'll be behind us whatever way we want to go on this and in the future as well. She said she'll see us through this, which is very nice.
Well, she seemed really nice, she seemed very, in, very interested in our problems and and I just, what I like is I, I want to think fifty or seventy five years ahead, I mean, town's not going to get any smaller. So, hate to do things and have to redo them again.
Well, most bridges don't last that long anyway, Dee, so.
It's supposed to have a seventy five year lifespan.
Yeah, so, you know, we worry about seventy five years now, the bridge will last for seventy five years. And then people alive then can put another bridge up.
That's right, maybe we'll have flying cars, we won't need roads, we can just fly around.
So, I mean, I, I think we do what we can do right now, unfortunately. You know, a lot of money is going to be spent on the White Plains Road Bridge. So it just so happens we've got two bridge projects at almost the same time, and then we have half of the Bosco and Bridge. That's coming up as well, so.
But we do have the money sitting currently in our funds for both the expectation of White Plains and the expectation for Closepin Bridge, so.
Yeah, we're going to be okay for those guys.
Oh, yeah.
But we've got to just keep building, you know, keep building it up.
Yeah, so I, I, I just want to caution against characterizing, oh, well, because White Plains is going to be expensive, we can't do this. I, I don't think that's a fair or, or accurate statement. Because we do, we do have that fund sitting there and we've continued to build it up and we will continue to be doing so through the warrants.
It's true. I just, you know. I think sixty thousand dollars is a lot of money to spend right now for us.
Just nice to have somebody will say, oh, I'll do it. So unfortunately, I can't afford to do that, but anyway. Next subject.
Well. I mean. We have to, as a board, we have to figure out what our strategy is going to be. If any, on, you know, on Closepin, I think that VHB certainly would like to have some kind of answer from us. So that they know how to respond to the state.
So, uh, my question, I'll, I'll go ahead and ask our, our chiefs here. You guys are the, the safety people, you've seen this sort of thing both here and in other towns at different points in time. Uh, what do you think about the bridge and whether we are fine with the twenty four feet? Because, hey, it's, it's wider already, even though now it's going to be faster two lane traffic. Versus us as a town fighting for and perhaps paying for going to twenty six or twenty eight foot. For the, the extra width, for, for example, fishers, bikers, walkers and, and so on.
Well, my opinion, the twenty eight feet, I think is, it would be great, but I think it's a little wide. I think we're gonna, cost wise, I think it's going to be more than what we really can bear. Twenty six would be great, it would give us that extra two feet on one side, you know, the downstream side.
But it won't, though. They're not going to do that.
They won't go twenty six.
If they, if they go twenty six or twenty four or twenty eight, the line, the way that the lines have to be placed on the roadbed or right down the middle.
Dead center.
Yeah.
So then we're almost better off to leave it at twenty four feet.
So.
So, um, the new roads that I build, usually twenty one feet wide on the blacktop from side to side. A true fisherman's not going to fish off a bridge anyways, he's going to be down underneath the bridge, so the fish can't see his shadow. A bike going across the road, the bridge, usually shares one lane anyways. Most of the time they're too wide, so. To go twenty four foot, I mean, the wider the better, but like you said, Chris, do we really want to jeopardize putting this out? I, i- if they say we're gonna, well, you're gonna have to be on the back burner in another three or four years. I got rebar, I had a call today, well, Phil let me know the other day, there was rebar showing and I, I, I had seen it. And the only way I'm going to be able to fix that is because the coal patches time of year doesn't go and it's full of water. So I'm going to take a bag of ready mixed cement with a three quarter rock and lay in there and that, the rebar's still attached, but you can see it, and I got a call on that today, a guy called me. Is, is, the guy called me and said his wife just said there was a piece of rebar sticking straight up. Well, I ran right down with a sledgehammer and, you know, it, it was okay, it wasn't going to do any damage to a car, but if we don't get a lot of snow there tomorrow, I'm going to, the only way I'm going to be able to fix that now with the weather conditions and the temperature is, put a bag of cement in there and then it, it will fix itself for so people can't see the rebar and that when they see that, they get nervous.
Yeah.
But to get back to the width of the bridge. Like Dee said, it's like, it's like our firehouse right now. Twenty years ago when they built it, it was great, but we've, we're, we've already outgrown it. In. So the bigger the better, but do you really want to jeopardize? Two, three, four more years and then we still might not get a twenty six or twenty eight foot bridge.
Yeah.
Without paying, you know, sixty or seventy, eighty thousand dollars. You can make anything work. But a twenty four foot bridge is going to be so much far better than we have right now.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
I, I, I don't know, I don't know what the answer is, I but twenty four feet. I mean, what is it now, eighteen feet inside to inside, so you have like fifteen feet of travel, I don't even know if you have that much. Well, you do, because I go across it with a plow and the wing down, the wing sticks out seven feet, you know, eleven feet, so. Yeah, it's fifteen feet with a plow and the blade down and the wing fifteen feet, I go across that with that down, so, yeah, you got about so you add another fifteen, twenty. Yeah, another eight feet to that, that's going to be quite improvement. And of course, they're going to straighten it out some too, right?
Yeah.
I mean, it's not going to go.
Yep.
And
And I think they're even going to raise it a little bit.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
So, um, I know it's a hard decision, but some nights you like to have steak, but I come home and eat bologna.
Yeah, I know, I just wishful dreaming, that's all, I mean, really. I'd love to see it back to a covered bridge, but we know that's not logical, but that would be neat.
What Bob Pearson wanted.
Yeah, that, that would be neat, but that's not gonna, that's not practical, so.
All of the people that stop and stand on the bridge all the time would love that too.
Especially, especially the fishermen when it was raining.
Yeah, right.
But this morning up, I forget where I saw it, but a snowmobile caught on fire, I think it was up north or maybe Vermont, snowmobile caught fire inside of a covered bridge and in the river.
Oh, my god.
The last couple of days, it was on one of them fire things, I guess.
Oh, my god, that's, oh, my god, that's awful.
So, so back, back to this bridge. It's like herding cats here. Do, do you want, do you want another, another week to think about this, you guys, or or can we, can we make a decision tonight?
Well, back's against the wall, really, so. I don't like going with the, you know, I like to do what we'd like to do, but I logically, that's not going to happen, I guess, so.
But you have to be practical.
Yes, I know. So you might as well go with the, whatever the state wants.
Yeah, I, I was pushing to do the, the wider because both it made sense and that's what the townspeople really were saying that they wanted. But if we're not going to be able to do that, then I mean, our, our, I guess basically the options would be either we just accept the twenty four foot or we could always put a warrant article together that's like, hey, does the town want to appropriate the extra you know, sixty thousand bucks to make it wider and then let the town decide. Either way would be possible, I don't think we're going to have people that would I don't think we'll have very many people that would want to appropriate that additional funding, though.
No, not in this day and age, not in
I think that somebody, somebody would ask us, and this would be a legitimate question. If they're saying sixty thousand, can we hold them to sixty thousand in another two or three years? You know, is that, is that cost going to go up? I think Emmett, maybe you were saying to seventy or eighty thousand and, you know, I
Costs will always go up on stuff like that.
Right.
That's just the way the game is, I guess.
Unless we thought that the town would probably pass that, and I don't think they would, then I think we basically have to accept.
Bite the bullet, yeah. Yeah, I guess so.
So can, I, I'd like to make a motion. Here, I don't even know if I have to.
Go ahead, do it.
Well, I don't know if it's necessary, I mean, we're not spending money, even though we're spending a billion dollars, but on this, it's just, you know, it's just a decision as to whether we're going to go with the state recommendation.
I think it would be a decision not to spend money, so I think the motion is appropriate.
Why don't we have an un-motion motion? To, to accept, well, then I, I
No, I'll wait.
Huh?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I was talking to myself again, I, I'm sorry, I was being rude.
Oh, okay.
Well, not just, yeah, sorry.
You can talk to yourself, Emmett, that's all right.
Just mute yourself if you want to have a conversation like that. So, all right, well, then I, I move that we accept this state recommendation on a twenty four foot bed on the bridge.
Yeah.
Well, I'm glad that Steve's with me, I need a couple I need a couple of select board members here.
All right. Go ahead, Dave.
Sorry?
What was that? Mute yourself, mute yourself. What did he say? I didn't hear.
He said I oppose.
Well, I do too, but.
Yeah.
I mean. Listen, you, you vote, vote the way you want to vote. I'm, I, I want to go with twenty four feet, that will be that is my desire, but the two of you should say what you want, I
I, I want it to be wider, but I don't want to try to put the town on the hook for more when it's definitely going to be better than it is. I, I want it to be wider, but I don't want to try to put the town on the hook for more when it's definitely going to be better than it is. And the, we don't want, apparently we would get shuffled back further according to your.
We might.
I wonder if we could ever add something to the bridge, like a walkway on one side of the bridge. We could add it.
So, so one thing.
VHB about that and they said it would be more expense, much more expensive than just adding, like, just doing it now.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure it would be. Of course it would be. I'm, I'm talking something like a wooden walkway or something and sometimes you see them on big bridges and.
Then somebody has to constantly be clearing that sidewalk.
So, so I got an idea.
Yes.
I got a good idea. So why don't we, not to put words in anybody's mouth, but if we go for a twenty-four foot bridge, but we won't give up on the bigger bridge, we'll still keep working on the bigger bridge, but we'll settle for that if that's what it comes to, you know, in a couple of weeks, if this lady that, um, Chris has been working with, that's whatever's comes back and says, hey, this can work, then, then you can always go, you can always make the decision to, or am I, am I just.
Well, I think, I think if we write a letter to, if we notify VHB that we're going to accept the state offer to do twenty-four foot, I think that they're going to.
Done deal. Okay, I, I'm fall, I, I'm good. I, I'm, I understand. I'm, I.
Yeah, I think it's paying for engineering and stuff as well and, and then getting bids.
Right. So, D- Dave, can you give me a second?
Uh, I'll give you the second, but I want to wait for, for Dee to get back.
Hold on, I'm coming, I'm coming, I'm coming. Okay, sorry about that.
That's all good.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm requesting a second.
Yep, second.
Okay, now that she's here. Okay, great. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
What an enthusiastic bunch there. Okay, good. So Dana.
The board regretfully agrees.
Yes, right. Thank you, Dana. Exactly.
So that's what you, that's what you can tell VHB, that we're, we're sorrowful, but, oh, okay.
Sorrowful? I like that.
Yeah. It might ring a, ring a bell with somebody. Is, has there been any new correspondence?
No, there haven't.
Okay, so, um, so I received two pieces of correspondence and I responded to both individuals today and I think I sent you all copies of my correspondence. Hopefully you got them.
I'm, I'm having trouble with my email. I don't know what the heck's wrong with it, but.
I sent it to your town email too.
Oh, I don't ever look at that. I know I'm bad.
You should look at that.
I know, I should. All right.
Um, public comment. Oh, Emmett, you want to be the public?
And, and I will say that I got several, um, several correspondence as well, uh, all basically saying, saying, saying that they wanted everything to be done across the board for everybody or no one, as far as budgeting is concerned.
Mm-hmm. And I also, I also heard from three individuals that said that they thought that we did a good job. So, that's nice.
Yeah, that's.
It's, it's, it's very nice to, to hear that. Um, so with regard to the public, so Emmett, did you want to say something else about?
I did. I did. I, um, back a couple of meetings ago, um, I talked about transportings a cup.
Uh-oh.
Full of town spokes to Conca Hospital with our ambulance and I was asked, can you hear me?
Yes.
Should I start over?
Yeah.
You're okay now.
Okay, a couple of months ago, we transported a couple of town spokes to Conca Hospital with our ambulance because the other ambulances were, um, busy at the time and then I was asked if we charged, uh, um, people and I said no, and then I was asked, um, to look into, I, I said that I was looking into a billing company because it's all done by a one company, big company to bill that, but I looked into that and it's like thirty-five hundred dollars a year just to get signed up with this billing company. And then I did find another billing company. It's out of state, of course, but they bill and they bill so much per call, but, um, it's, it's quite a process, so, um, I don't, I really don't want to get into transporting to Conca Hospital day in and day out because it, um, we have Hawtican that does that, but, um.
And we're paying a lot of money for that too.
Yeah, we are. Thirty-five thousand dollars a year, but that's, I mean, it was, that's a half of one person's salary for a whole year's work. Um, it is very cheap, um.
It's expensive, but it's a great deal.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. And when they go bye-bye, I, um, the town of, um, Salisbury, I think, is the size of Webster and I think they're up to eighty or ninety thousand dollars a year. They pay Pennybrook Rescue to do their transporting, so it is a good deal. So, um, I'm still looking into it some more. I'll have some more information for you later down the, down the line on the billing. But I just wanted you folks to know that I'm pretty sure it was Dave that, um, asked if I'd look into that to see what it details and, um, just wanted you folks to know that I am working on that.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, um, I'll get you some updates on that, so, um, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, public. Um, let's see. You know, that brings us to motions and approvals. So we've got to approve some minutes and we've got some accounts payable and payroll manifest to do. So, Steve, Steve, do you, you've been pretty quiet tonight. Do you have anything that you want to say? I mean, you can be public too tonight if you want.
I can't, no, everything, I think everything is going good right now. I'm just, uh, sitting back taking it all in and, I mean, everything I've seen in town has been running fairly smooth. I mean, everything at the police station's running good. I, we're having a great set time with the fire station. Everything seems to be running smooth there. Um, I just hope everything runs quiet and we keep the COVID down and everybody stays healthy.
I know.
That's the truth.
Okay, um, well, on to, on to, um, minute approval and let's take care of the, um, accounts payable.
Good idea. Sounds good.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I'm looking, accounts payable check warrant.
Uh, question for, I think it's Dana. Why do we have two different ones?
Well, Wendy closed out the first run and when you do, you can't go back and add. And so that's why we have two and that's happened to me before, so I understand that. That's why we have two.
Okay.
One is, one was the one we thought was, and then there were three more items.
Okay, I, um, let's see, wait a minute. I do not see. I don't see that.
Which, oh, the accounts payable warrants?
I saw the one for nine hundred and something.
Yeah, that's the number two one.
Yeah. I'm looking for number one.
Uh, it's directly below it.
Directly below it.
Yeah, it's that one, then the next one, then copies of bills and the check warrants.
Okay, I don't have that. How do I go, how, I'm at the bottom of my page. So how do I go lower?
Uh, it shouldn't be at the bottom. Are you looking at the select board, uh, meeting two, eight, twenty-one folder?
Am I, am I looking at what?
The select board meeting two, eight, twenty-one folder in SharePoint?
Um, oh, I'm, I see, I see on the right. I, I look at these blocks that we have instead of going over there. So I see where you are. Okay, thank you. So, looking at the first one. Um, accounts payable check warrant. Let, let me take a look here for you.
The large one?
The large one.
So I would like to point out one specific one in here, uh, in the realm of full transparency, uh, there is going to be one there listed for me, which is, let's see, I think the fourth item, forty-two-four dollars and ninety-five cents.
Oh, way to go, Dave.
And to, uh, s- tell everybody what that is, uh, that is the APC battery backup for the police department server, uh, which was quoted to asset, to us at over eleven hundred dollars, uh, by, um, Mainstay? I got that right. Yeah, Mainstay. And, uh, so whether or not the same server or the same company, et cetera, happens, we're going to need this item uh, to run any of those servers appropriately because the battery backup that is up there at the police department will not actually take care of any server equipment.
Yeah.
Um, so this is the appropriate thing for that, uh, and since I was able to go pick it up a lot cheaper than the quoted price, uh, it is a hundred percent exactly the same item and completely brand new. Uh, so I went ahead and did that after confirming with Dana that I could just do it as a reimbursement for that. And so we now have that. It is sitting in the town office, uh, with Dana. And we will have saved over three hundred dollars doing that.
I am, thank you, Dave.
And I am, I am not taking any money for that. It is one hundred percent a product price and reimbursement.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, that's great. Okay.
Uh, let's see. Um, and in the support of making everything, uh, easily transparent as well, uh, I know that Emmett touched on it earlier. He's not directly there, but Chief, you can probably do so as well. Uh, Phil Mitchell and Sons did work on the public safety building, uh, and I believe also on the police cruiser. If you want to touch on that briefly, just so that people are aware of what's happening.
Um, so they painted the inside of the fire station and the inside of the police station. They also mounted the fire station's new television set and had to do a, a backing to make it attach to the wall. Um, the sheet rock has got metal studs, so they have to put a backing plate in which it would hold up. It's fairly large. Uh, they stripped out the cruiser and build, so we will build Primex or they're going to pay for the stripping of the cruiser. The cost we got from, um, yeah, place on Route one forty in Hilton, uh, OME was eleven hundred dollars. So, we got a substantial savings by doing it ourselves or having Phil do it, his son do it, um, and he's done it before, so it worked out good.
I'd like to get, I'd like to get young Phil to start repainting the inside of Town Hall.
He did a great job in, in ours. It looks fantastic.
It does, it does. And he's, he's very reasonable.
Hmm.
So, okay, um, any other comments, questions? So I am going to move to, um, to approve the accounts payable check warrant for two, eight, twenty, twenty-one in the amount of three hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars and ninety-four cents.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, and just a clarification for folks as well, uh, that is that expensive because it includes the payment to the school district.
Yep. And then on accounts payable, on the, on number two, um, okay, so what we have there is, again, oh, for, so it's Rose's garage. So was that a, is that for the cruiser chief or?
That was for, that was for replacing brakes, rotors, um, and he also pulled the four tires off in our wrecked cruiser so that we could, um,
Put them on the new.
Need four brand new tires versus four really well-used ones. So, that's what that was for.
Great, good. Okay, any comments or questions before I make the motion? Okay, hearing none. I move to approve accounts payable check warrant for two, oh, eight, twenty, twenty-one in the amount of nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty-seven cents.
Second.
Oh, she can have it.
I beat him.
Yeah, you did beat him. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that's a count.
Unfortunately, I need to step away for a quick second.
Okay.
Uh, you can keep going. I will have minor corrections to minutes one nineteen.
Okay.
Not the others.
Um, okay, are you, you're going to be back pretty quickly? I would just answer is yes.
Yes.
So, um, Dee, did you, were you able to look at the, um, let's see, I don't know if we have, oh, there's a motion for trustees of the trust funds. Really? Oh, this is just one, it's just one motion. Um, so Dee, I think that you and I can do this.
Okay.
All right, I request the trustees of trust funds issue a check for four hundred and fifty-three dollars and thirty-five cents to VHB for invoice number three, three, five, zero, six, eight, dash, twenty-one. These funds to come from the Bridge and Culvert Capital Reserve Fund.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was quick.
That was very quick. Okay, um, and then, you know, on minutes.
And the payroll manifest.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I just lost my SharePoint. It just completely vanished on me, so I was punting with minutes. So, all right, wait a minute. So payroll manifest, where is that?
It should be under the February eighth select board meeting.
Yes, that's where I am.
Okay, so if you're in there, it should be, it should be in there.
I know, I'm just looking for it and I don't see it. Is it, is it?
Uh, payroll manifest.
Um, encumbrances, proposed budgets, town warrant.
You're not inside the, uh.
Yeah, that sounds like the wrong meeting.
Yeah, that's not the meeting. You're at the.
I've got it.
Yeah.
I've got it. Payroll manifest. Here we go. Yep, there we go. So, um, looks pretty standard. So I moved to approve the payroll manifest for payday two, oh, eight, twenty, twenty-one for pay period one, eighteen, twenty-one, twenty-one, thirty-one, twenty-one in the amount of twenty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty-one cents.
Seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. So, okay, um, we have, what happened to our minutes?
Those are in a separate folder called unapproved minutes.
Okay, so do I go back out of?
So you get out of the two, eight meeting in the front page and you'll see them. They're the second item down.
Okay, I'm. I am trying to make this thing go. I am trying to make this thing go back.
At the top, if you just click on Documents.
Let me see.
Oh, you'll see the, like, Select Board Documents, Select Board Meeting, blah, blah, blah. If you click on Documents, then you'll see the listing. Probably the easiest way.
Um, I see something that says all documents, Dave?
No.
I don't.
So when you're going into the Select Board, you'll, you'll go Select Board and then Documents. And then what you did last time was Select Board Meeting 2821. And instead of that, you'll do Draft Meeting, Draft Minutes Awaiting Approval.
So, so I'm supposed to go out of Select Board Meeting 2821, right?
Correct.
Yep.
Yeah, I just don't see how to do that. I just don't see it.
So are you currently looking in that folder? So you see Code Enforcement, Emergency?
Yeah.
Okay. So just above that, you'll see a spot that says like Name Modified By, et cetera. And just above that.
Oh, yeah. Oh, oh.
Okay, just above that, you'll see Select Board and Arrow Documents and Arrow Select Board Meeting 2821. Click on that Documents.
It says all documents, right?
Uh, no, that's further up on the right.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry that to be slow on this, but I don't see where you are. Oh, you mean all the way over to the left?
Uh, yeah, sure.
Oh, oh, okay, I'm. Okay, so documents. I clicked on that. Here we go. Okay, oh, Draft Minutes Awaiting Approval.
Yes.
Oh, my God. This is so unnecessarily contorted. Alrighty, so. Oh, we've got a lot to do.
Uh, it's only four.
We've already done 1214, right?
I need to do the unapproved minutes. I mean, the, uh, non-public minutes.
Okay, I think we did. I think last time we did the public minutes and these are the non-public ones.
You did, yeah.
Okay, so should we begin at the bottom then? Are they the bottom four that we, that we need to do? Cause. They all look the same.
None of them have a dot docx and a dot PDF. So they're, they're really the same thing.
Yeah.
So there's only four, there's four dates. As are listed in the.
Oh, I see. Okay, so you wanna do January 28? Um, when I opened up to January 28th meeting, um, it says Monday, January 4th on it, so. Does anybody else see that?
Yeah, I see January 4th. What happened to the December 14th, non-public? We didn't accept that yet, did we?
Yeah, that's what I was.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was interested. So we okayed that, right?
You have not, yeah.
No, we have not, okay.
Yeah.
Why don't we just work through them in chronological order?
Good idea.
So. Okay, so let's start at January 22nd then?
Uh, 1214, non-public.
I don't. God, the way that this is, the way that this is laid out, I don't even see. Oh, 1214, all the way at the top.
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
I make a motion. Can I, oh, can I make a motion to accept the minutes as written?
You have to specify which ones, but yes.
Oh, December 14th, 2020, on, uh, the, uh, non-public.
Seconds.
Good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then.
January 4.
Okay. Oh, this is Rick Vanderpoel. Okay, um, so his, his name doesn't have, it's not Vander. It's V A N and then D E. If that can be corrected.
Yep.
Um, and it needs to be corrected throughout.
Okay.
Good, thanks. Um. And then, yeah, not Vernon. Right. Okay. So I move to accept the minutes for meeting on, select board meeting on January 4th, 2021.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next would be January 19th.
And I might note that at the top, it's not Monday. It's, that was on a Tuesday.
Okay, well, I opened it up and it says January 4th again. So I don't understand.
Nope.
Nope.
This one says Select Board Held a Virtual Meeting on Monday, January 19th, 2021. And he's saying that that was actually Tuesday.
Yeah, I know, that's what he's saying. I know, I just. I'm just telling you what I'm seeing when I open this thing up. Um.
So I do have a couple corrections to this one. Uh, while she's trying to get the rest. Olive Wood is one word.
Okay.
And then the paragraph about the police cruiser, it has TT instead of the word it. Uh.
Oh, it was close.
Yes.
Where is that, Dave?
I'm at, I see it, I see it, Dana.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then the last, uh, paragraph, it's they Subcommittee, and that should read the Subcommittee.
Okay.
Um, and in the first paragraph, in the first paragraph, um, I, I put in red that the board agreed to repair the shed. Is that, does that show on yours?
I do see in red that it says repair the shed.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's there.
I, I thought we agreed to repair, to put the roof on it.
Yes, that's what we have been talking about, the roof. Oh, and we had, oh, yeah, it's not clear, actually. So, um. Yeah, earlier we had been talking about, talking about the roof, that's right.
Well, and before the roof, we talked about repairing a whole shed that I think was a different shed with a wall.
Yeah.
This was just the roof of this shed.
Yes.
And so I think we should make sure that we say the board agreed to repair the roof of.
Roof, yeah.
Yes, the roof, the roof of the shed. But it might be a root, a moot point now.
Why is that?
Well, because the person that was doing the work on Mount Vernon uh, finished the work that he intended to do. I don't know if he or we um, want to get into another contract with him specifically to repair the, the roof of the shed. We, I think we should discuss that. But I think we need to go into non-public to do that.
Yeah, cause we already have a motion there in those minutes to do so. Um, and so I think that this reflects what, what happened. Uh, we can certainly go into a reputation non-public, or at least I'm assuming that's what you want to do. And then, uh, talk about reconsidering that motion.
Um, I think that generically, we are in agreement that the roof should be repaired. So, you know, I don't, I don't know that we have to say anything more about that because we're not assigning it.
Well, the motion that you made was to approve that, uh, Josh Dowd to repair the damaged shed at 18 Vernon Drive for the cost of $500, with the funds to come from general building maintenance.
Um, when did I make that motion?
That same meeting?
Oh, right, right down below. I'm really sorry. I'm, I'm sorry. Yeah. Um.
Yeah, that was the motion that followed that discussion.
Yeah, 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 I got it. Yeah. So, gosh, and it's not even nine o'clock yet. My brain is gone to sleep.
But those were the minutes, so, I mean, with a little bit of, we still have to accept these minutes.
Yes.
Because of, and with the changes.
Yeah, these would still be accurate minutes. Uh, it would be if we wanted to change the, the motion, we can recon, we can reconsider.
Tonight.
Another motion, uh, for what we want to do. Uh, but these would be the, the minutes of that night.
Right. So if there are no more corrections to these minutes, then I would move to accept the minutes as amended for the Select Board Meeting, January 19th, 2021.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Um, so that's 119, 119 again.
February 1st.
Right. Um, so I think, I, I mean, it's what we've, what we've always had on, on these minutes is, um, and it's just helpful to have, to have a sort of a banner at the top that says. Um. The minutes and the date and whether it was a public or non-public. Um, I mean, you've got it in a paragraph here, but it's.
Oh, they are there in a header. It's just when I insert it to the format for whatever they use in SharePoint, it takes it out every time.
Okay, that's so unhelpful. Alrighty.
I'm not sure why it does it. It just does it every time.
Yeah. Um, okay.
Yeah, if, if you look at the, uh, PDF version, you'll see the header.
Oh. So, so just out of curiosity, when the, when the minutes are typed up, are they typed up in a Word, as a Word document?
Yes, they are.
Okay, and then the Word has a little, um, program or something that goes with it that auto-corrects or underlines things that are not correct or it misspelled or whatever. Do we use that?
Yes, we do.
Okay, helpful. Okay. Okay, I, I think that these minutes are fine. You both are okay with it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, I move to accept the minutes as written for February 1st, 2021.
Second?
See you today.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And I think that's. I think that's it for draft minutes. Correct? So that is it. What we've got down. Um, it's only 8:07, which is so great. We still have, I mean, I've got like portion of my brain left. Um, do we wanna go into a non-public here and further discuss Mount Vernon?
So I'm fine with that. I do wanna, uh, point out that we do have an item that we have not touched on because our appointment is not here, and that is the code enforcement.
Yeah.
And while we do not have Tom Bay, Russ may want to speak to that because he's been working with him. Uh, and the second one, which regardless of if we try to make a decision on anything tonight or not, uh, is based on the amount of correspondence that we have seen and the general gist of it, uh, being to apply things across the board. Um, I did a quick look at the different, uh, stipends and just to give you the numbers. Uh, across all of the stipend line items that are not already given the 3% increase. Uh, the total is 56,950. And so a 3% increase across the board for all remaining stipends in the budget would be $1,708.50.
Okay, so what you're saying is that it would just cost us a little over $1,000 to give 3%?
To all stipend budget line items that, that are not already given it, which I believe is the elections and town clerk.
Um, are you including in that?
Is, so the, for to get the, the increase or that already did?
That, that, to get the increase.
So the 3% stipends that were not already raised would be treasurer, deputy treasurer, cemetery commissioners, fire officers, fire members, emergency management director, and select board.
Okay, um. So. I. I mean, I'm just speaking for myself. I'm, I don't need an increase in my stipend. Um, maybe the two of you feel differently about that.
I, I just look at it this way, like, most of these people have told us that they don't feel that it is appropriate to have an increase. But I wanted to bring it up and give us actual totals.
I agree.
The majority of the correspondence that we got said that everything should be across the board the same. And so I wanted to give us a price tag of that if it's something that we wanna consider.
Well.
I think, I, um. I think we should discuss some of this in non-public, but.
I'm, I'm happy to discuss in non-public if we have a particular way to do that, but I don't know any non-public that.
Well.
I don't know any reason for non-public that, that matches up with, with that.
Well, we're talking about compensation.
But none of it is an employee.
Um. No, but I wonder if, I saw that, I saw your note on that, and I just think that we have always gone into non-public when we've talked about compensation, whether it's an employee or not. Am I right on that? I mean, if. Now, I, I can't remember. What, do you have the RSA for that?
I did.
Okay.
Let me go try to find it again. Oh, it's just the non-public one. So it's, uh, 91A. I'm sure, I see.
And the 50, $56,950 is what we are already.
That is the current total of those listed stipends that I mentioned.
How do stipend increases of 3%? Add up to $56,000?
No, 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 that's the total stipend that we currently put out in the budget.
Oh, oh.
The additional through, the, if we added 3% to it, would be the, the thousand plus.
Oh. And that would give everybody who earns a stipend a 3% raise? Is that right?
That would give every budget line item that is a stipend a 3% increase.
Yes.
Whether, whether that is additional time, whether that is additional uh. Cost per hour, whether that is additional number of people that can receive it. That is different depending on where that budget line item is, but.
Fire, the fire department calculations are very difficult to understand. Let's put it that way. And, um, so, you know, I don't. And I thought that a couple of months ago, when we were first beginning our budget conversation, that we wanted to have a tight budget this year.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
And.
Which is why we ended up with saying that we didn't want to increase any of the stipends. Which is why we ended up with saying that we didn't want to increase any of the stipends, especially after most people had said they did not want to. But then, of course, that didn't actually happen the way that we expected it to, and the situation arose at the uh, public hearing.
Mm hmm.
So.
I, yeah. I, I don't know where this list of how much money we got from the COVID funds, but that's, it's in the packet anyway. Um, the town and where it's divided, I was surprised about that. So I um, because we got fifty, almost sixty thousand dollars in the COVID relief, and it's been spread around to lots of people, which I'm glad.
Absolutely.
They deserve it. Um, so that's kind of a big increase. I mean, they deserve it and all that. Um.
Well, that's not what they're getting as salary or what they're expecting this coming year in the budget.
Yeah. No, that's true. That's true.
Um. So okay. A thousand, what did you say the figure was, Dave? A thousand what?
One thousand seven hundred eight dollars and fifty cents.
Oh, so seventeen hundred dollars.
Mm hmm. Uh, and for the ninety one A, uh, colon, three, section two, et cetera. A is your dismissal promotion compensation of public employee, but it's specific to employees. And, uh, let's see, they have rights. Then, let's see. B is hiring of a person as a public employee. C is adverse reputation other than a member of the public body, which is anybody elected. Uh, D is considering acquisition, sale, et cetera, property. Uh, E is negotiations on pending claims and litigations.
Okay, so, so it's, so it's employees. And, um.
So, so we can't go into non-public? Is that what we're trying to say?
So, so we shouldn't, we shouldn't, and we're not supposed to when we're discussing these things. So, um. I, I agree that there should be fairness in how, in how increases are made. I also believe in, in a merit increase. You know, I believe that people should earn their, their increases. And so I'm sure that Russell and Dana, when they have their evaluations, would have would have earned their increases by that time, you know? Um, I don't know if anybody was bothered by them showing an increase when they've not been here for very long, but they'll have, they'll be evaluated before they get an increase. So I'm not.
Yeah, there was, there was that question and it was answered, and I believe that was Tara that asked it. But it was, uh, and they understood that, yes, we needed to put it in the budget to be able to grant it once the evaluation happens.
So, um. I think that the fire department stipends get calculated in this highly specific way. And Emmett did not request any increase in their stipends. Now, um. This, the whole stipend issue, you know, has, has become an issue in the past, or it only becomes an issue when Emmett is going to bat for his people to get an increase in stipend, but there's a whole sort of algorithm um, that perhaps you, Dave, having a mathematical mind like you do, you might be able to actually understand it.
Okay.
Um, I, I would encourage you to try because that would be very elucidory for all of us. Uh, in terms of, I mean, you know, when I first came on the board, Bruce and, and company had passed a thousand dollar stipend increase for the select board from two thousand to three thousand. There's no doubt that we earn our money, right? But, but nobody here, I hope, is depending upon the stipend that they get from the town to provide them with food, clothing, or shelter. So.
I certainly hope three thousand dollars. Well, I would really love if three thousand dollars could do that for the year.
I know. I know. Three thousand dollars might keep Calla in underpants for a year, but, you know.
No.
I feel your pain. Um, anyway, so, I mean, I'm just speaking for me. The two of you might. I mean, we, I'm not saying that we don't deserve it, but I just feel like this is basically a volunteer job. Um.
Well, and you know, like, the, as was put in the communications from several people on or talking about the fire department, they do it as volunteers out of passion. That's not for a paycheck. But at the same time, uh, we heard during the budget portion, when we brought Emmett in for both road and for fire stuff, that he thought, you know, the town was in uh, was looking at trying to keep everything as lean as possible. And so he wasn't going to request an increase, but if other places were getting the increase, that it would be fair and he would want to, you know, get that as well. And I think it would be fair to say that many of the other locations have gotten that increase. We've certainly done our best to, to keep that down in, for example, executive, which is, which is our section, uh, despite having two new employees. Or, and, but it would definitely certainly be unfair to say that the police didn't have a, a large increase even without the cruiser. And, and the same could be said about some of the other stuff, so.
Well, the only thing I can see is a lot this year. Um, a lot of the money came from the COVID stuff, and most people got good, you know, and they deserve it. Hazardous duty, so, um. They should just not have like a raise maybe. I don't know.
Well, we already agreed to having the raise now for elections officials and town clerk, so.
Well, for the town clerk, I think, right?
Both. All of the elections officials and the town clerk, that whole.
Oh, they're getting.
All of them have the three percent increase per, either per hour or per salary styled stipend.
Yeah, and they got, you know, they got COVID relief. So. You know, I think that it's I think that the, I think I, I think that what happened at the end of the budget hearing was it was, it's in retrospect, it's very frustrating to me because, um, it, I, I don't, I wish that it hadn't happened.
Um, the situation and the way the events unfolded is definitely unfortunate.
Absolutely, absolutely. It is. And so, um, anyway. Uh. You know, I think that in fairness, we should make it across the board.
Uh, and I'm not particularly. Issues with that?
Well, I don't want a precedent. I don't want a precedent, and I'm scared of that. I, I think that it's not, we don't always give three percent increases. And that's been a fault in this town, I, I have to say. You know, we I think that the, I think that, Dave, it would be really helpful if you can find out or you come to understand how those stipends are generated.
You're talking specifically for the fire department?
I am, I am, because they are really an entity to themselves in terms of, okay, um, I think I think that, um, before next budget season, if I'm still on the board or whether I'm on the board or not, um, it would be a good idea to revisit how we deal with yearly increases. Um, I do prefer a merit system to just an automatic three percent increase.
And I did reach out to NHMA to ask about how we should be looking at stipends and the amounts, because I know there are also legal issues with treating stipends as pay because technically they are not.
Right.
We are not employees. Uh, so I was trying to find that out. Unfortunately, they have not gotten back to me yet. But I wanted to bring up the, the number so that you all, that, that both of you would have the concept of if we did this, this is kind of the number and the impact that it would have. And I am fine with tabling any kind of discussion of this until, uh, the next meeting to be able to hopefully hear back from NHMA and also to go dig into the fire department stuff to see how the stipends work. And maybe we can get a more accurate or, or better way to to handle that or think of it for budgeting, because I know that at least part of it is uh, based on whoever responds to something. Uh, and so the combination of them having five more members than they did the previous year and more calls means that they're likely to pay out more, but I don't know how that would equate to percentages.
Mm hmm.
So.
I, I think we should look at all the stipend things, to tell you the truth, not just the fire department.
That would be fine. We could devote a meeting, we could devote a work session to that.
Yeah, that would be, I would appreciate that.
And if Dave can, can get some understanding of how the fire department works, that would be magical.
Okay.
So why don't we table this discussion for the time being? I think that's a great idea. And the next time we meet, we'll have more information.
Sounds good.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes.
Um. Okay.
Code enforcement, if we wanted to have Russ talk about it, or if he wants to talk about it.
I mean, I can talk about it for a little bit, just for a quick bit.
Sure, go ahead.
I mean, I don't know if you've gotten a chance to read over what I typed up, but they were basically quick questions and just a, a quick flow of how things will work in the office for a code enforcement procedure with me working with Tom Bay. I've talked to Tom Bay about it, and he said that's pretty similar to what, or almost exactly what he does in other towns with working with their administrative officials. So I feel pretty confident that this is a good process and good setup. It's just a matter of having Tom Bay come in and talk at it, talk about it more, because I just gave him a basic, a basic rundown on Friday when he came into the office, printed it up for him and handed it on the way out so that he could review it before coming to this meeting, and that's kind of where I was at the moment.
Okay. Okay, I'm glad that you've run it by him already.
Well, he was there, so, to pick up something. So I was like, all right, we'll talk about this while you're here.
Yeah, um, Russ, did he? Um, did you, did he talk at all about what he perceives to be his um, how his job here would change? And whether, okay, you didn't talk to him about that.
We didn't talk about that. I mean, I could.
He didn't mention it, though.
He didn't mention it.
Okay.
He just figured this would be more duties that he would be picking up on top of his own duties. So that's the impression I got.
Yeah, and when we talked to him last year or year and a half, I think, maybe, um, he, he realized that he would need to get wetland training so that he could identify vernal pools and especially vernal pools in the middle of winter, which is not the easiest thing to do.
No, it's not.
Right, so, um, anyway, so he knows that he needs to get some education on that. And then, of course, COVID struck and DES stopped all, you know, you have to get everything by webinar now, and for some people, that's difficult. So. Um, okay, well, thank you for that. I think we do need to have a conversation with Tom Bay. So, um, we need to, maybe somebody needs to contact him and see if we can get him to our next meeting.
I will call him on Wednesday.
Okay.
And so I want to ask a question here in your code enforcement procedures thing. The end of what I think is from NHMA was the town meeting should adopt an ordinance uh, making explicit that the town is enforcing the state building code. Do we need to do that and put that on as a warrant article for this upcoming warrant?
Um, interesting. I think that Sue Roth knows the answer to that.
Yeah, I know the last time it was voted down in two thousand seven. I don't know if we wanted to do some sort of information campaign before we let up to it to kind of get public support behind it before we did a warrant, or at least get some people to speak to why it would be beneficial.
Would it not be required before we can actually start using?
That's why I wanted to talk to, I mean, I think we could enforce zoning problems, zoning violations, and any ordinance that we have already adopted. However, there would be certain things that we wouldn't be able to enforce, and that's why I wanted to perhaps forward the questions I submitted to the town attorney just to see what areas
Mm hmm.
are good or not, because that was, I asked these similar questions to NHMA, and that's the answer I got. It's pretty vague and something.
I, I think those questions are very good, Russell. I think they should be submitted to the attorney, so we get a decent answer.
Well, the attorney is going to say, um, that he has not, he's not familiar with our regulations. So he would need to spend a number of hours going over planning board regulations, zoning and, you know, zoning regs and all of that. So it's, you know, we, we have to know that it, it's going to be a little bit of a, a chunk of change there.
Right. I would agree that it will probably be a chunk of change, but at the same time, I don't think it makes sense to even try having the enforcement officer if we don't have anything to legally enforce.
Well, right. Um, so, so the question I have here is if we have a code enforcement officer and the code enforcement officer enforces the building code, which he's currently doing, what is the difference?
Well, right now, he's doing it like a fire inspection, so it's just a safety inspection.
A health and safety, right? Okay, and, and the, the adding on the environmental part of it.
Officer, I think.
Yep.
What's that?
Yeah, I think he's considered the health code officer.
Well, I think that's Roy, isn't it? I'm not sure.
Roy, Roy is health and, and Tom is.
Sorry, life safety.
Life safety.
Life safety and life safety and code inspector. Life safety, life safety and something.
I'd have to look it up. I know it's life safety.
Yeah, it's life safety and something.
Let me get the website.
Um.
Like, he's got one of those fun titles.
Well, but that might be his title, but that's not necessarily what he does in.
Life safety inspector, code enforcement officer. He is listed as the code enforcement officer.
Okay, and, and the code is the building code from the state, I thought.
Well, I think we're enforcing our zoning code.
Zoning codes.
Because we are able to enforce our zoning code because that is adopted.
Yeah, because we haven't adopted.
For example, if we did the wetlands ordinance, we'd be able to enforce the wetlands ordinance because we adopted it.
Uh huh.
So what's the state building code? What does that entail? What, how, how, how many details does that?
Everything about building a house or a garage or whatever.
Two by fours.
All in there.
Yep.
And it all matches, uh, this, what the state has been doing at least so far for New Hampshire is to just adopt the national building code. Um, other states like Massachusetts and California add on and make them far more restrictive and, and have many more requirements. But what New Hampshire has been doing so far is basically just adopting the international and national building code.
So like telling you, you can use two by fours or two by tens or whatever it is.
How much insulation is required in particular zones and, yep.
Okay.
And then we do the, the state does the same thing with, uh, the NEC, which is National Electric. the NEC, which is National Electrical Code. So they adopt, the the state will adopt the particular code from a particular year. And that's what's viable until the next time. I believe we're on the 2017 version of that as New Hampshire and they passed one in 2020, but New Hampshire hasn't adopted it yet.
So in other words, does that mean that somebody couldn't, not that I didn't even touch electrical, but somebody couldn't put up their, in their own electricity, they'd have to have a a certified electrician do their electricity. I mean, people, some people like to do a lot of their own things and and so.
So the answer is interesting, but the short version of it is that if it is yours for you and you own it, you can do whatever you want to. But if it's brand new construction or it's being done for somebody else, you need to be certified. So I can do whatever I want to in my home. And as long as it doesn't require an inspection, for example, to to be a new connection to the utility or something, no one can say anything about it. If I burn down my house, I'm liable for it, but you know, no one can say anything about it. But even though I know how to do all of that and I follow all of the NEC standards, since I'm not certified, I can't come do that for you.
Okay.
That's, that's all that means. I can't be in business to do it without being certified. But that's, I think, general across the entire
Country?
State and country anyway.
Okay. I'm trying to figure out why we got it. Why it didn't pass, but I think because a lot of people like to do their own work on their own property. So they think that's one of the reasons, I think.
It could also be that most, and I don't know the specifics of what was tried to be passed. A lot of times, building permit, a lot of times, building permits, building ordinances, building code includes, you've got to do all of these different things, whether it's, say, a shed or a lean to or a garage. And right now, the only thing that we have to do anything for in town is for building the primary residence, basically.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I see. You need a permit. You would need a, yeah, like slot.
And not everything needs it and building code doesn't necessarily say that you have to do that. But that's, that's one of the things I could see that maybe that maybe however that was being handled in the previous ordinance, that could have done something as well.
Okay. Yeah, I can't remember.
Russ, Russ, have you looked at what was tried to be passed?
So the folder is actually pretty slim. It just shows the vote in the minutes. I'm not sure what they tried to pass. I would have to go take a double look to see if they said which version of the code it was.
Well, you know, back in the day in 2007, I wasn't here, but I have heard a lot of stories about what it was like. And things, things has have are quite different now. From my observation in the last eight years, you know, that people are more willing to, you know. I think the town has become a little bit more progressive, maybe. I either the, you know, having the, having an energy committee and putting up a solar array is good evidence of that. I mean, there was, there was some objection objection to that. But the people in and on the conservation commission were amazed that there wasn't more objection to the solar array. And they they were amazed at what happened at last year's town meeting. That, you know, the CONCOM was able to get that much support. That's never happened before in this town.
And we also do have a little bit more time before town meetings than regularly, well, what? So that's, yeah, so if we wanted to get some support behind it, I just, my fear with it is that it gets voted down this year and then you'd have to wait longer to try to get it on there again.
You only have two weeks for a warrant article, however.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's why I asked, because if we actually have to have that, then we either need to act or we should delay the whole thing.
Right.
I think you'd need a lot of positive PR and and getting into details about what the code would be, I would think. I'd like to know, you know.
This is a project. I mean, the whole, the whole, you know, some of the, some of the planning board regulations are not, are not really in sync with the building permitting process, which is what Russell has been working on for the last couple of months, right, Russ?
Yeah, I've been working on trying to streamline it a little bit.
You're streamlining, but it's, it needs to be synced better with what what the regulations are as written. And that's why Sue Roman and Sue Roth had begun to work on this about a year ago. So it's a whole project. And Dana, before we leave tonight, you know, you were talking this afternoon to me about wanting to, you know, sort of reinstitute the project list.
Yes.
And to add certain goals that that things that we need to be looking at and definitely the code enforcement thing is a big one.
I think it is a big one. And I think that it it really should be done very thoughtfully and thoroughly before you bring it to the people.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, right. You you can't just bring it to this town meeting. You've got to have a lot of information out there so people can digest it, I guess.
Right.
With the back of better turn.
So so maybe, maybe one of the things we can do is resurrect the project list. If people, I don't think Dee has a copy. Maybe you do from when you were here before of the project.
I don't remember, honestly.
Okay, okay. So we have, we have, I guess, the newest version of the project list. That was, that's like a year or two old.
Dana's really good at giving me all these things, so.
Yeah, we we have a folder called SB Projects and we also have future projects and topics. Those two folders in the Slack board SharePoint will have the majority of all the stuff that we've been talking about either before or now.
Okay, that's right. And so maybe Dana, as as possible goals come up for you. Maybe you could just add that to that list. Why am I, why am I hearing myself talk double?
It, I think it's the Chromebook that Dana has.
Oh, sorry.
Ah, that's not your fault. The town's what gave, what has you using it.
Oh, great. They gave me a cheap Chromebook.
We'll get you a headset.
Headset would fix it.
Would it?
Yeah. Cause then you wouldn't, he, you wouldn't, the, the problem is that the speakers come out of the the laptop and then the mic picks it up at the same time. And like if I do that on, say, my MacBook, it it's smart enough to know that and it cancels it out. So you won't hear it. But most of your inexpensive stuff doesn't.
You know, I hate to tell you this, but I actually understood what you said.
I know, I totally got it as well. It's lovely when you can actually understand them.
I I try to make it understandable.
I know. I know. It's just you're dealing with you're dealing with people with this color hair and just takes a while.
People that aren't crazy about all that stuff. I'd rather be out in my garden.
So Dana, are you comfortable with that? Just putting, putting goals, ideas inside that folder on SharePoint?
Yes, I am. And and I'd like, you know, but I do think we do need to, I mean, my my mission to myself is kind of to stay on top of it so it doesn't get lost.
Good.
And and I've realized that the last six months, anyway, it's been, it's been a learning curve for us and we haven't made much progress. So I'd like to make progress.
I think we're doing fine.
Well, I think we're doing fine too, but.
I mean, things are, you know, things are settling down and and so much better than before you were here.
Well, that's good.
Yes.
You know, at least we're not listing quite as bad.
That's right. That's right. So I had a thought about Erin Darrow. She needs to be, she needs to be nudged again. I don't know, you know, I expected that we would get the DES application stuff on the bridge. I expected we would get that last week. And of course.
She was supposed to come back with the the redone design for the box culvert for us, because she talked about it, but said it was old and needed to be updated. And so we were expecting to see that and the DES submission.
It's all the same.
Would go with it so that we could sign it.
Yes, exactly. It's all the same thing.
I have a call into her. I haven't heard.
You haven't heard what?
Lost him.
Okay, here it is. I do have a call into Erin. It was just today, so I haven't heard back from her. But I will nudge.
Okay. Good. Good. Okay. Well, I I am becoming faint from hunger. So I would like to adjourn unless somebody has a pressing thing and we can.
You said you wanted to do non-public.
I know, I know. I said that back then when it was 40 minutes earlier. So that non-public is is just about the shed, right?
Oh, that's, that's what you were talking about, yes.
Yeah.
But if, if I think if you want to try to change the motion from us already having said that they should do it, that that would make sense to to do sooner rather than waiting, because otherwise it should be getting done.
It should be getting done. Now with snow all over the place, I, it's, it's gonna be harder.
Arguably, arguably, it's more important to get it done sooner because it's a roof.
Right. The question is, you know, shall we? Shall we stay with the original contractor? And who is willing to do it? I mean, Josh said that he was, he was willing to do it and the cost that we had quoted was $500 for that, which he thinks is adequate to do that project.
So why didn't he do it?
Well, it was a matter of a a little difference of opinion, shall we say, as to what a completed job should look like. And so I had to exert some coercion to further explain and demand a completed job. And so we got a completed job. We, that, you know, the cleanup was was done. And it looks good. If you haven't been over there, you should see it. It looks good. And 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 I also believe that we can, if we, if we put the property on the market within the next two weeks, actually, we could just sell the property as is and not invest another dime in it.
That's fine. That's, that's, that would be fine. So.
I think that if we, if we put the property on the market at an extremely reasonable price.
Not extremely, at a reasonable price, not extremely.
Well, I mean, have you been over there?
Yeah, I went, I went with you, I think.
But I mean, have you stopped?
A lot of land over there. That's a pretty good lot.
Oh, it's a nice lot.
Have you, we had a real estate dealer come and say what they thinks it would be worth? Are we going to sell it ourselves?
If we, I don't know how to sell it ourselves.
Okay, well, that's. Well, we, we, we have.
We have a policy, so we can either do, for example, open bidding or we can basically put it on the market. Are kind of the ways that our policy looks like it's it's written. I'd have to go back through it again and.
The one thing is if we sell it with a real estate, real estate, uh, state dealer, we don't. We don't have to worry about the paperwork.
In a way. It'll just, it'll just cost us some moolah.
Well, we could maybe work out some kind of deal like that, too. So we have lots of realtors around.
We have, they're really busy, too.
Oh, I know. And it, and houses are going fast. And that's why I said I don't think we need to give them a big bargain. They're going to get a bargain no matter what, because houses are going so fast.
And realtors work on percentages. And so it's, and the way it's usually done is selling realtor gets X percent, buying realtor gets X percent. And but that's actually in the contract and the listing and posting of the selling realtor. So that can actually be adjusted by the selling realtor to say, well, it's a lower percent or I'm getting all of the percentage and the buying one is not. Which actually they did for our house and our realtor got really mad after realizing that later. So stuff like that is like it's in there. And so it would be, if you're thinking that you want to involve a realtor, it would make sense to talk to them about the whole thing, not just, hey, we want to grab a realtor and have them sell it. The other option is, of course, to look at or ask our appraisers what they say this is worth.
Well, I think they've already appraised the property. They assessed it. So we've got, we've got that on the tax card.
But you know what they, what they assessed it for?
Well, no, not off the top of my head.
Okay, all right. I didn't know.
So that would be another reasonable starting point. But of course, everything changes all the time very fast. Various properties that are are around have, like I saw some of them not get sold and then go back up again and not get sold and then go back up again. And they're at almost double what they were like half a year ago.
Look what Bianca, look what Bianca pulled off on her property.
Well, they did a lot of updates on their own property. They replaced the roof and a whole bunch of other things. So.
But they could, they could, they, they couldn't sell it at 160. And then boom, COVID came and it was a big fat, you know, egg for them, which is great.
Still around. So that's the thing of.
It is a good time to sell. We should, we should probably devote time in in a work session to figuring out how we want to handle it. And maybe bringing in, if we think we want to deal with a realtor, then we should bring in a realtor.
Dee, you probably have good advice on this.
Oh, yeah, I would, because believe it or not, if I wasn't going with my newspapers, that's my next deal would have been gone in real, selling real estate. I had offers of, oh, that's three or four different companies. So that was a long time ago, but.
But I mean, you, you.
I'm sorry. Let me, let me call, let me call somebody. We'll see if we can work, just I'll see what, I'll see about working a good deal.
Okay.
Nothing, nothing final. I just will talk in broad, broad.
Well, I think that it would be good to hear from a local Realtor who can give us some comps and that kind of thing.
Yeah.
So maybe you could work on that. Do you have any time to do that?
Um, well, yeah, I will. This week I have a few little time.
Okay. Well, I also want you, I want you to go down to Dana too and have Dana, you know, make sure you you can get to your email and you understand SharePoint better than I do, please.
Yeah.
Very troubled by SharePoint. So anyway. So do we want to hold off then on on fixing the shed? If we can move quickly enough on putting the house on the market, because it's not going to do that shed any good at all to to go through a lot of time with half of it.
Right.
You know.
I think we either need to go and try to sell it within the next couple of weeks or we need to put something on it. And if we can sell it, then it makes sense not to do it because someone else will probably want to do a more thorough job than plywood and tar paper.
And they might tear it down anyway.
True.
Yeah, that's true. I'll ask, I'll ask some realtors what they think and if there's that going to be that much difference in price, you know, if we end up spending more money and and if we've got, if we spend that money, even if it's 500 bucks and we're only going to make $500 more or raise the price, it's not worth it. Even if it's five hundred bucks and we're only gonna make five hundred dollars more or raise the price, it's not worth it. Um, but if we, you know, if we ended up doing the shed and then it, we'd get. Three or four thousand dollars more just by putting a little roof on for five hundred bucks, then it would be worth it, in my.
I also think that um, it would be interesting to actually get into the house. And see what condition it's in. I know that Phil Mitchell and his son went through the house and cleaned it. But I don't know what that means and that was a while ago. And so um, I think that should be done too, so. Um, are you guys, is everybody comfortable with me going in with Steve? I think Steve has the keys to it.
Okay.
So I could.
I would do that too, I would go in.
Okay, okay, anybody that would want to come in and see it, I think it would be useful for us. I also think that the White Plains Road property that the town owns. Um, we should consider doing exactly the same thing with that. We should get rid of these two properties.
Yes, I do too.
My, my question for both of them is how long have we owned them? White Plains was just deeded this year, right?
It was, yeah, sometime last year and we have, we have not owned, we have not owned Mount Vernon for very long. So we would have to offer it back to the Dur- Durgens, Durgans. I think that's who owned it.
So if it's within the three years or so, then talking to a realtor or something is pointless?
No.
Because we're not gonna get any of that.
Um, we would be.
We wouldn't get more than the taxes, so at that point, we would just sell it at tack, at back taxes. Whereas if we've owned it beyond three years, then we can sell it for whatever and keep it.
Well, that's true.
So, so if, my, my point is that if it's, let's say it's been a year and a half, uh, I, I don't know the timing. But if it's been a year and a half, it's pointless to go talk to a realtor, because we just say it's gonna be a quick claim deed for the amount of the back taxes. Because that's all that we can keep anyway, is the back taxes.
No, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that that was fair to the owner. I mean, by law, we're supposed to give them back any money that we make on it, other than money we spent on it. And, and taxes. So, so I don't.
Right, but we don't have to sell it at fair market value. We can just unload the property.
We could unload it, but I, I certainly wouldn't want to unload it for just taxes, though.
Well, it would be taxes plus the amount that we've spent cleaning it up is what we would sell it at. Because then we wouldn't, because otherwise we'd have to set up escrow accounts and everything else. There, there's a really long involved legal process of making sure that funds can get to places, et cetera. Uh, if you make anything on it and it's within the, that.
Either, either Bruce or Karen knows how to do this. So, so, you know, we should ask them. And I will do that. I, I will do that, because I'm interested in this. So.
Okay. Yeah, th- this is all part of the, the property stuff and it was in some of the NHMA training and there's a bunch of regulations and stuff.
Okay.
And, and I believe that Russ can actually help you with some of that too.
Okay. Okay. Okay, thanks, Russ. You don't have any work to do, do you?
Nah, never.
Okay, good, good to know, good to know. Okay, well, I, I therefore am going to move that we adjourn this meeting at eight fifty-seven.
Second. You're not fast enough today, Dave. You're not hungry enough.
All in favor?
I did eat right beforehand.
I know, I saw that, saw that. What, did we all say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Dana, are you all set?
I am all set, thanks.
Okay, good. Thank you. With that, oh, for our next meeting, um, maybe we can go two weeks without a meeting?
Oh my gosh, a week off?
I'm thinking that we deserve it.
Well, it's President's Day, so that is actually a federal holiday.
The eighteenth?
Yeah, the fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
Oh, I'm in, I am in February. Isn't today the?
Eight.
Oh, we're, oh, we're looking, so.
Yeah, so the next one would be the twenty-second.
Right. So this is all good then, right? We'll have our next meeting on the twenty-second. That's kind of ex- that's exciting.
What time?
Six thirty. Oh, unless there's an option. How did five thirty work for you tonight, Dave?
Well, I was shoving food in my mouth.
Beat me, though.
It, it, it's not good.
Well, why don't we, why don't we try every other, every other meeting? Because, see, so what we've done is we've been meeting now for three and a half hours. And even though I'm starving to death, I'm still basically awake. So. Huh?
Go ahead, I was gonna say, why don't we just meet in the middle and start at six o'clock, not five thirty, not six thirty, but six?
Well, especially if we can take a week off, then I think six thirty is probably fine for the next one.
Six thirty?
No, six.
Six?
Thirty is what we had posted for everything, right?
Six thirty is our normal time.
Normal, yeah.
Yeah. It's all right for work sessions, so anyway, so, so on the twenty-second, we'll meet at six thirty.
Right.
May I ask a question while I'm thinking of it?
Sure.
Is the warrant to your liking at the moment? Because I have to post it by the twenty-second.
We did approve all of that.
You did, yeah. So I was, I just want to make sure that there's no additions.
And we, the only addition would be adjusting, you know, getting that three percent across the board. Right? We agreed on that.
I think you were talking about doing that, but. The, does the exact amount have to be perfectly the same in that warrant article?
Are you, um.
So right now it doesn't have those three percents in it.
Right.
But we basically said, hey, we should come back and talk about this next time, but that would be the same date.
So you would say, you would add three percent to the operating budget?
No, it would be, uh, it was going to be to the stipend portion, uh, if we decided to do that. Um, but you said it needs to be posted on the twenty-second?
Yeah, no later than the twenty-second.
So that is that meeting date, we could make that decision and then post it on that day.
Will that work, Dana? If you posted it tonight?
I'm not driving back to Webster after a meeting.
Why the hell not? How kind of guy are you?
I don't think you need to.
So, so would you actually have to drive back to work to post something?
Um, well, the way that I think of posting, yes, but.
Oh, yeah, because there's, there's the online, but that counts as one of the two locations.
Yeah.
And the other one is Town Hall.
I'm just.
But what, like Dee and I are down the street, we can, we can go print something and stick it in the box.
I can figure it out. Let me, let me, my mind isn't working, but I'll think about it, yeah.
Okay, think about it and advise us.
Okay.
Yeah, because the, the boxes are there where we post everything and so if we do that change. And, you know, like Russ could stick it up on the website and I'm, you know, either Dee or I can print it and go stick it on the, the glass.
Yeah, that's true.
That's fine, that satisfies being posted.
Okay, all right. I just like to do things by the book.
But doesn't say who has to post it, it just has.
No, it doesn't, yeah. I feel guilty though, having you have to do it, but I'll get over it.
Good, get over it. Okay, see you all.
Good night.